Good evening. The Methuen School Committee Workshop Executive Session of March 24, 2025, will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Please note that executive sessions are not Would you please call the roll?
Member Donovan?
Here.
Member Keegan?
Here.
Member Maxwell?
Here.
Member Shabelia?
Here.
Member Willett?
Here.
Mayor Beauregard?
Here. All members are present except for one. We need a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented for March 24, 2025.
So moved.
Motion from the Vice Chair. The second is from Member Shabelia. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The aye. Next is the flag salute. We do have We have some written comments that were submitted. Begin with Reverend Daniel Stanley.
Honorable Members of the Methuen School Committee, good evening. It's me again. My name is Dan Stanley. I serve as pastor of Rivers God in Methuen. I have done so since 2011. More pertinent to our current meeting, I have been a volunteer at the Marsh Grammar School Library since 2011 as well. During we went from two librarians per school to one librarian per school to no librarians per school and zero libraries. Now, for the past three years, I've operated a weekly mobile book exchange to the Marsh students. This year, I've been bringing books to over 400 of our Marsh students. Less than half of our And it's only about 6% of our Methuen students that have had access to library. And now this year, each library received thousands of new books for our libraries. Thank you for that. They're great. They're beautiful. They're exciting. They're shiny. But they're mostly unused. I've been told that self-checkout stations will be installed, and that's better. Still woefully short of what What our libraries need are Media centers specialists who will teach and Guide our students so that their literacy will improve and that their imaginations will blossom. Without librarians, we either have libraries being run by teachers or volunteers. Overloaded. I don't think it's fair to expect teachers to add another 30 minutes to their schedule. Is up and down to the library, helping them find books and helping them check out books. And Are great. They can be a great asset to a library, but a librarian And put away books. Libraries organize the libraries to meet the ever-changing needs of our students. Librarians actions on how to locate So that students can be competent library users. Librarians teach themes and genres and parts of books. They help ELA common core standards with learning Our comprehension strategies. Librarians foster a love of reading for pleasure. Reading for pleasure opens up the doors of cultural awareness Of others, possibilities for the future. They teach how to explore an online catalog of curating, curating personal collections and encouraging digital citizenship. These are not things that volunteers can be And these are I have every Teacher would rather have a 20-minute free period per week that a student goes up to the library. Bring their kids to the library. Methuen students are going to continue to work at a disadvantage without libraries With qualified personnel. I know that Superintendent Quong and her staff have been doing the best they can with what they have. I know that budgets are tight. Maybe this new budget already has funds set aside for librarians. But I've been told, we just don't have the money. Budgets are statements. They show the priorities of an organization. We have not had the money because well-staffed libraries have not been a high priority. So I've come today to try Importance of libraries and librarians on your priority. I'm going to continue to raise this issue with you and I'll Continue to make the residents of Methuen Dedicated to this because I care about the students of Methuen. I'm sure you do. But I urge you, find the money. Make the right choices. Let's bring librarians back to Methuen's grammar schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak but didn't sign up? If not, then the Vice Chair has some written correspondence.
Methuen School Committee, my name is John Drew, and I have been a proud homeowner in Methuen since 2021. I have two children in the Methuen School System, one in fifth grade, age 11, and another in preschool, age 3. Like many parents, I am deeply concerned about the school budget and the potential After our children's education. Seeing nearby district Over considering Staff, I fear that Methuen could face similar if Or reductions. As a first-year member of the CGS School Council, I've had the opportunity to sit with the superintendent, principals, teachers To have early budget discussions firsthand. Before this experience, I was admittedly About how school funds were allocated. However, what I have witnessed over the past year or so has completely changed my perspective on school funding. I can say without That our school Teachers are dedicated, thoughtful, and laser-focused on ensuring every dollar is stretched as far as possible to support For our children and our community. Attended both the CGS and the Tenny, giving me firsthand experience with the remarkable efforts of educators across They do, often with limited Is nothing short of a miracle, in my opinion. I am not asking the committee to blindly approve the superintendent's budget. As Of our city's finances, I expect To scrutinize every expenditure. Found consequences of cuts to our schools. Our children must be I also hope the city Ability when the budget reaches them and that they vote to keep education at the In's future. Mr. Mayor, you were elected to move our city forward. The way this budget is handled will define your legacy. Underfunding our schools will have long-term That extend far beyond the next fiscal year. Strong schools create strong communities. Please vote accordingly. Fully submitted, John R. Drew Jr., Six Spring Valley Road, Methuen, Massachusetts. Dear Members of the School Committee, Superintendent Quong and Mayor Beauregard, we, the undersigned teachers and members of the Donald P. Unity are writing to express our deep concern regarding the recent public exchange involving School Committee Member Maxwell, a current member of the School Committee and a parent at our school. In a Facebook post, School Committee Member Maxwell advised a family considering relocating to our school district to avoid Thus expressing dissatisfaction. This public admonishment of our school has been widely read In the community, including by staff, parents, and union members, and screenshots of this exchange have been circulated to the mayor. While we acknowledge that everyone is entitled to their personal opinions, the harmful impact of such a statement, especially coming from a School committee cannot be A public official advising families to avoid our district creates a damaging narrative that undermines the hard work of our dedicated staff and the many positive aspects of our school. If our own leadership feels comfortably, comfortable publicly declaring that our school is lacking, how can we Have confidence in our community or choose to enroll their This is particularly concerning, given the current challenges facing our district. Morale, high teacher turnover, and the strain of meeting the needs of At a time when we need to build a strong Trust, having a public figure actively advising young families School only exacerbates these challenges. The fact that School Committee Member Maxwell has been an In our school's PTO raises additional concerns about the message she may be conveying to other parents and community members privately, especially if she feels comfortable making such negative statements publicly. It is difficult to see how we, as a district or as a school, can move forward and improve when those in position of leadership are publicly undermining our efforts. Trust, collaboration, and support are essential School community, and we are deeply concerned about the long-term effects of this School's reputation and morale. We respectfully urge the School Committee, the superintendent, and the mayor to address this situation promptly and take steps to prevent similar occurrences in the future. We believe it is crucial for all members of the School Committee Actions, especially when they have the power to influence public perception and the community's trust in our school. We look for The steps that will be taken to address this issue, and we hope that together we can work towards creating a supportive and positive environment. Sincerely Of the Timony Grammar School, specifically signed, and I apologize if I mess up anybody's last name. Lauren Trzasko Education teacher. Nicole Conway, general education teacher. Ashley Wolfendale, general education teacher. Olivia Hay General education teacher. Amanda McCarthy, general education teacher. Stacy O'Leary, general education teacher. Laurie Burns, general education teacher. Alana Hool Teacher. Delano, general education teacher. Susan Fanopoulos General education teacher. Mandy O'Brien, general education teacher. Karen Krull, school psychologist. Michelle McCormick, program assistant. Kara Crowe, teacher. Stephanie Nugent ESL teacher. Jessica McLeod, ESL teacher. Linda Higgins, grade two teacher. Kaitlyn Machino Bonnie LaRue Sabrina Fulham, grade two. Gillian Kavanaugh, SLP. Kristin Natalie, or yeah Natali, special education teacher. Kaitlyn Two. Colleen Stillen, special ed. Susan Laporta, special ed PA. Christine Crowe, special Special ed. Melissa Dimani, special ed. Christine Chloe, grade six teacher. Yvette Tozi, special ed teacher. Shannon Roberts Reading specialist. Terri Zapala, teacher grade five. Colleen Muller, teacher grade two. Monty Grade five. Michael Price, teacher grade five. Mark Rapazzo, teacher grade three. Tracy Swiniarsky, STEM teacher. Catherine Ozawa, ESL grade one. Catherine Osinamo, ESL grade five and six. Catherine Coyne, grade
At this time, I will close public participation. If you cannot make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to Martha Saroyes at M A S I R O I S at methuen.k12. Dot M A dot 3 P M on the day of Superintendent, at this point, I'll invite you to begin the presentation regarding the fiscal We're talking about the preliminary budget.
Yes, thank you. So There's have a binder in front of you that has this presentation, hopefully which will allow you to Ask questions. In that, this presentation is actually a combination of everything pulled out in the narratives. So it's also you have a narrative of each school, an executive summary in the front, and each school in a capital improvement program in the back. So the hope for tonight, and I know there were differing opinions about presenting this to everybody at the same time this evening, and I just, I want to be able to explain the thought process and the conversation the chair and I had last week. Having done this as many years as I have done this What happens is the information sometimes gets, takes its own narrative. Chance to actually educate and explain to everybody what we're How we define the foundation budget. And so that was one major reason behind the thought process Tonight to really be able to have Budget and where we are. The second part is, we were also very much hoping for some information About the federal grants, of which we did not get. We had a couple of sources that we were hopeful that we would have a little more affirmation about the grants. So I was really trying to hold out that final information if Be shared tonight or not. And so that is also part of the Wait. So at this time, it has been posted on the website, the presentation Tonight, plus all of the narratives that you have in your budget book are up on the website appropriately. Meeting site for School Committee. There are copies here for some folks who are with us. The principals will also be presenting tonight. I think What also we have to understand is this is happening weeks prior to what we have done in the past. In my seven years, we've never put together a budget in March, and the amount of That is with me tonight, to try to get the entire staffing salaries. Place, all of the current ratified contracts and tentative agreements are reflected in what I am presenting this evening. So I also want to say that that was a part of our work. And so Again, there was an enormous amount of work that went into getting this into the hands early, knowing that this is going to Somewhat challenging and will probably need several more conversations in between the meetings that we already have scheduled. So I did put that on the agenda for this evening after this presentation. I do believe strongly, especially because of the way March falls, the 31st There's three weeks between now and the next time we formally meet. I do think that is Without another discussion about the budget, especially when I have to have the public hearing on May 20. Stone. So we have to have an approved budget, ready to go Thing to get that into the hands of the CFO and the mayor for City Council. So April 14 Second just doesn't leave us a lot of additional talking time for the budget. So I think, again, my hope tonight is that there is a lot of, you know, listening Testing and reflecting and that we can come up with another meeting, potentially next week or the week after, again, before the 14th, or maybe one each, to be able to then have additional discussions depending on how we leave this evening, right, with what task Setting forth to say, now we need to do X. And so that is, I just want to start by saying that that is, was the reason behind that decision. And again, I know it was Practice, but I do think that once you see all of the information here tonight, again, everybody will hear it at the same time and At the same time. And again, ask questions as you go. Write down questions. Our next session will be about more questions, right? There's going to be a lot to process tonight. So timeline And On the screen. Is it showing appropriate? Okay. Timeline, I just So Process, we've, we've met with school leaders, district leaders. We're presenting to you tonight. We have many discussions, I think, ahead of us before we have to have that final Budget hearing, which also I would say that night, we have to have the actual budget that we're presenting to vote on 10 days prior to that date to be able to post it. So there are, I think, seven to 10 days. There are requirements around that to, that we will have to post the budget number that we'll be approving on, on the, the hearing evening. And then the City Council will have their public hearings as well at the end of May and June. So I think there's, there's something to be said. I show this every year, but I think seeing it in a chart is pretty critical. This is page four of your presentation. So student enrollment, I think what is most important is the red bar shows where we are this year. All right. And the trend, so we're looking at five-year trends of our student enrollment. And these are things I tried to focus on, and a lot of it is feedback from this particular committee over the past year and four months working with all of you. Some of the conversation has been really succinct about the fact that the data is what we need to look at. And so I've provided as much of that as I could here for context and understanding what we're talking about. And being able to show this, right, being able to walk away and take this to somebody else and be able to explain what is actually happening was what my thought process was in putting together this presentation. So this is just one So this is just one example of a way in your narratives, so in your executive summary, you have the number, you have the chart with the numbers, right? But this chart really does show exactly what we've been talking about with the continual increase of our English learners, which you can see that bar on the far right there is almost doubled in five years. And that's what we have been talking a lot about. It's gone from ten percent to just, just over nineteen percent in five years. Our first language, not English, students also continues to grow, low income continues to grow, and high needs. All right? So that was. Yeah, please, I, I think the best way to do this is to ask questions as we go. Waiting till the end is going to be way too overwhelming.
I'm totally on board with that, and I think.
If that's okay.
This is our, one of our biggest, actually, this is. Role as a committee, so tonight, I'd like to have more of a structure. Of course. To be a lot more free-wheeling than. Ask away.
So high needs, the English language, students with disabilities, the English. I know those all come with additional expenses for the. But on here, you also have a low income column.
Yeah.
Is there? Students don't fall into one of these other categories. Is there an additional expense there?
So it's not necessarily an additional expense, it's a really good question. Are additional dollars. Who are low income.
Dollars in or dollars out?
Dollars in.
Okay.
Which we're going to get to. So not necessarily part of the, and I should say with hope, the low income actually does dictate our entire. So I was incorrect in saying that. So there's dollars in, right? Based on low income L status. And, and the thought process behind that is that they're going to need more. Because they're not necessarily participating in early education programs or, you know, head starts. That's where that promotion has been.
Now, those entitlement grants are primarily federal, though, right? To that later.
We will.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Can you just define what high needs means? Because. Students with disabilities. It's very clear. It's mean.
So high needs is an actual, it's. Dr. Golovski can help me here, but it's. Of students that actually are in these categories. Low income, English learner, students with disabilities, could be in the high needs category. So that's a, that's a group that. Multiple times. Is that right? It's not a unique number.
Yes, so our, our high needs group of students, so if you're looking at the chart here, about sixty-five percent or so of our students fall into one of these categories. So some may fall into more than one, but. None of our students fall into at least one of these student groups.
That was said so much nicer.
And that's sixty-five percent of our entire population? Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
So this is a, another statistic that our school committee has seen recently, but thought that it would be important to share here. Again, this is also going to be in the hands of other folks and posted publicly. Indicated the, the, the data that we talked about specifically here last month, the blue circles represent the students that are coming into district with disabilities and the students at the bottom that are withdrawing, and the top number is much larger than the bottom number. The orange circles represent our English language learners, and again, you can see there's a vast difference between the students that are enrolling since August of this year to, and the date on this was three, four, I believe, to the number of students withdrawing. And this is going to be hugely impactful as we move through this presentation and the information. But again, not new to the committee, but potentially new to the. While sharing, because this, these are the kind of numbers that we're really paying close attention to and what it means, and to Member Shibilia's sort of point, right? This is all going to be about where is the, where's the funding coming from and where are we spending that funding and why isn't it enough? Right? Why aren't we getting enough? I made that part, I added that part for us, but it's the why aren't we getting enough? So there's also lots of conversation and controversy over the Student Opportunity Act, so I also felt it important here to make sure we were really clear about what it means. I use it frequently, but again, not necessarily sort of have it here to refer to. But here, here's the student groups that the SOA reform, the, the regulation of two thousand and nineteen benefited five groups of students. So guidance and psychological services, special education out of districts, so not special education in total, that's also going to be very important. English learners, low income, and it's all expected to be phased in by twenty twenty-seven. Right? That's, it was, it was billions of dollars, they had to phase it in over a longer period of time. So you can see there, there's some explanation about those tiers. Interestingly enough, so Methuen currently, districts that have high-low income students benefit from these higher rates. And so there's a, there's twelve levels that the state has defined for low income when it comes to the Student Opportunity Act and how you are rated. Is at sixty, sixty point four percent low income. Lands us in tier ten, level ten. That's pretty high, and, and there are dollars attached to that group of students, in addition to just flat dollar amounts attached to English learners. The rest is not as easy to, to say the flat dollar amount, and this is where I'm going to get into some detail about why some of the funding. It's really, really confusing and where the problems lie. We've talked about this before, thought I would put it back in here. You know, I highlighted the inflation rate issue that we've had, the foundation budget is set based on the foundation, based on the inflation rate that is set by the state. Last year, it was one point five three, this year it's one point nine three, far low, far lower than the twenty-three, twenty-four school years where it was capped at four point five, and even those two years. Did not meet what the actual inflation rate was, right? We have talked about that, Member Willett has talked about that, we've advocate, advocated for that. That is something that also is just a, it's a, it's a standing challenge to the foundation budget because it's not fixed, and that becomes incredibly problematic for us when we're planning.
Chairman. Just a follow-up through the chair to the superintendent. I know our colleague from the Haverhill School Committee has done. PhD in economics. And that since two thousand twenty. And twenty-three to the present time, because of inflation, there's been a gap of about twenty. Seventy funding for the city of Haverhill. Do we have a comparable number? Because if Haverhill was twenty million. Chapter seventy and not accounting for inflation, I would. Smaller community, we're talking about.
Millions.
A, a massive amount of money.
I don't have a comparable number, that is something I could probably figure out.
That's something that should be presented to the audience, because we're talking about chapter seventy, which is about. Million dollars per year, and we have a. Dollar, close to it. We have a millionaire's tax, which the MTA. Okay? Diversion of eight hundred million dollars to the T, and they have, also have a surplus from the millionaire's tax that's not being part of the budget that's being presented by the governor. So we're having discussion about what's, with the federal level, and I said. Situation. But at the local level, we are limited with our local property taxes. I know the governor. The auto excise tax, to me, that's a no-brainer, that's a non. Candy tax, a tax on prescription drugs, a tax on cable boxes, so. Beacon Hill. About taxing. And yet they have a rainy. That's almost approaching ten billion dollars. They have a millionaire's tax, they approve casinos, they approve pot dispensaries, they approve sports betting, but yet the governor is not going to help us. And again, the only people that right now I'm seeing helping with, at least put an analysis of the situation is our colleague from the Haverhill School Committee, our esteemed senator. An advocate for the gateway. Filed a budget amendment, he's been on the front lines, he recently had a presentation at the State House. So there's a massive. That I hope the audience here tonight and also at home realize that you're talking about. Streams that are not being applied to the schools by the current administration. But at Beacon Hill. And the local taxpayers of Methuen are not going to swallow. What's happening at either Washington, which we don't know yet. Beacon Hill, what has happened the last few years. They've. Seventy. We don't know about the circuit breaker, and years past, they've undercut that. So we have to be balanced in our approach here this evening. Now, again, you're making a presentation. I'm here to listen to that presentation, but we, I make sure we. Revealing all the facts on the ground, and that's always been. Selected official, is that I. The ground, I don't go into speculation or hypotheticals, I go into a concrete numbers. I'm seeing from chapter seventy, and there's a massive disconnect, and we have the revenue stream. The local schools. Thank you.
Okay. I. This is some of the information that I'm presenting to you tonight along the same line of what Member Willett just said. There is a rally cry right. About what's happening in Massachusetts with our school funding, and what I mean. Roundtable, super. And roundtables in the Commonwealth, and we had a legislative breakfast on Friday, and there were a few of us who presented, and again, I'll share some of the information we presented because it was pretty compelling about special education costs and funds and source, revenue sources. But I will say that. A little bit of a shout-out, I guess, we had many legislators with us, some, Francisco Palino was, was there, so I get to spend some time with him to share some data. There were senators and representatives from all around, from, it's all the, you know, from Arlington all the way up here, it's a very large roundtable, and they really were passionate about the conversation, really appreciative of the information we handed them that they could bring back to have these conversations about what some of the, what the, the lack of funding is doing to the communities. So it was very, a positive experience for us, it was worth the work that it, that we put in to, to present, but there is, again, a rally cry with, within my colleagues and, you know, getting to legislators and making some, some noise about what's happening at the state level. Not saying it's going to be fixed tomorrow, but there are folks making noise. So this is our, some, for some of you, hopefully this looks familiar, you have this sheet actually in your, you have part of it, in your binder in the, the side sleeve. This is the summary sheet comparison for FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six directly from DESI. This shows exactly what our chapter seventy-eight will be, and what our required net school spending will be as well. And that change number is not the number that we want to see. That change is lower, the two point four million dollar change from FY twenty-five to twenty-six is lower than it was here in Methuen prior to SOA taking effect, the eighteen, nineteen school year actually had just about a two point four, so we're getting lower than that at this point, which for us is telling us that something is fundamentally off with the formula and how this is working. So I want to spend a, a few moments just talking about special education funding, and I think this is where I have really taken a deep dive into how the state actually funds special education costs in our foundation budget, and how do, how does circuit breaker work? So we have these two, two sort of differing pots of money. And I think the one thing, so you'll see here, the, the chart I gave you, it was Westford, Tuxbury, Woburn, and us, myself, that presented as a group on Friday, and this was some of the data that we shared. But you can see very strongly, this is not a Methuen-only issue, right? This is not something that we're experiencing, and why is it happening to us? This is happening in every district, whether it's suburban, affluent, urban, big urban, the trend looks very similar to what you'll see on this chart. And I think one of the things that is the most striking for me, and this is something that, again, I think it's just, we got to, we got to really internalize this information to be able to reshare it out to people around us. When DESI gets our enrollment in October, right, in October one enrollment, there is no difference of funding for special education kids, they are included in our grade level enrollment numbers, there are few exceptions to that, not enough to make enough of a financial difference. And so a student who is identified as on an IEP for maybe needing just speech services is counted the same for foundational funding as a student in a sub-separate program. In districts. And so now just take that in for a moment, right? That is something that is, is incredibly striking, and that was part of our conversation on Friday, because we know what we're experiencing, if kids are coming with more need, our numbers, right? This is that conversation that sometimes people in the community get a little mixed up about. Well, our enrollment isn't going up, why do we need more money? Right? It's because. The needs of our students are increasing, and I don't know how else to define that and, except showing the world this kind of data that says our student needs are increasing, which I'm also going to show you that, chart, in a moment. Our sub-separate students counts are going up. Seven sub-separate students looks very different than forty-seven regular education classroom enrollments. They just look different, they cost different. So, so I think that is a really powerful understanding to have, that they are not counted differently. So what the state does is they take a percentage of your in-district special education and your out-of-district, and they stick a number on that, and they put it in your foundation enrollment, which you could see on one of the charts on the big spreadsheet on DESI's website. And I believe that in-district, it's like three point five percent or three point nine percent of your total population, and out-of-district is like one percent. So again, it's not, it doesn't match the funding needs that we're seeing for both groups of students. Questions about that? So this is a big one.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair to the superintendent, we did the Ed Reform Act of. When was the last time the state has done a full evaluation? Since nineteen ninety-three.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen.
So that, the years that. That was the first time the formula changed at all, was with that Student Opportunity Act. Two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, and.
Far as I know.
With the circuit breaker fluctuation, the, the current amount is seventy-five percent.
Correct.
At times we.
Yeah.
There's a bill on the Hill with Senator Jake Olivera to increase it to ninety percent.
Ninety, yep.
And again, what I emphasize to people. You have an opportunity. These bills were just filed, to be on record with your state senator and your state reps and advocate for the increase of chapter seventy, which I've been consistent over the last two years, and also an increase of the circuit break. Seventy-five percent to. talking about extraordinary circumstances of a student population. Um, and again, if you look at the population, we've had an increase of the English language learners and the extraordinary this relation. Um, and again, the only constant that we can focus on is that it should go from seventy five percent to ninety percent because the funding should match with the child. Because if you don't match the funding with the child, not only are you going to be penalizing that student and you're going to be sacrificing services for the regular ed in order to pay for the service of any local school district.
Agreed.
If you have to sacrifice teachers and administrators, uh, and that is a is a crap shoot is that we don't know. All of a sudden, we could have an influx of a hundred students that are profoundly reimbursed seventy five percent and the remaining twenty five percent will be the responsibility of the local school district.
Mm hmm.
And also just recently, we had forty four percent for transportation for special ed.
Correct.
Now, to the process, but again, that's woefully if we're talking about these profoundly disabled individuals. That's something also we have to put on the radar screen. We do have cash reserves in Methuen, but projects, not to personnel, because if you start using cash impact your your bond rating. Do certain things at the local level. And I know, um, that we're very close to the levy limit. We have about a $300,000 gap to the levy limit. So people who are taught ride or drain our reserves, right? I think it's counterintuitive because you have a State House right budget process. If you're not happy with the governor's budget, mobilize your forces to approach your state reps and senators. We have, we have a day on the Hill as school committee. The MTA I know, uh, has been working with the Association of School Superintendents, the School Business, right, and also the MTA and the school committee are all in concert that that chapter seventy formula has to really be revised upwards. And we're losing tens of millions of dollars. But again, now is the time, I said the prior fiscal year too, is now is the time to mobilize forces. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Looking at this chart, I'm reading it that in four years, we've increased our special education almost $20 million. I'm I'm not reading that incorrectly.
You are not reading.
What is that money being spent on? I mean, I understand special education. What we're spending $20 million more on now than we were four years ago?
Yes, and I'm going to because the next few help. Okay? Anything else on this slide? Okay, so again, I think Member Willeth to me, uh, but the the it's okay. The next slide, I think pieces that is really important. And this was, uh, information that I shared, uh, on Friday is our, the rate of and the rate of transportation increase is is just a faster, higher rate of reimbursement can give us. And so so what we're seeing so that not all of the 20 million, but a lot of that is, uh, in and twenty four, OSD allowed the private schools, day schools to up their tuition by fourteen percent. They did it. So, you know, we saw a pretty large spike in in tuition costs that year. And so now each year when it's oh, like a whole lot, except that's three per sex, three on what was already increased by fourteen percent two years ago. Again, uh, the the, um, the folks in Woburn are really mirroring, they're smaller, so it looks a little different. Uh, but, uh, that Assistant Superintendent for Student Services presented with us and her and her superintendent are really experiencing something similar than what we're, I mean, it's, you could almost mirror the communities, again, just a different size. But that is something that we're seeing. And I think, um, to to share, um, I'm just gonna actually oh, no, I don't want to do that yet. Um, to share that Member Willeth just said, I think there's a false narrative out there too. Don't understand circuit breaker. When you hear things like funded or full, seventy five percent means fully funded. Well, what does that actually mean? It does not mean that the state gives us a reimbursement for all of our special education tuition, right? It's seventy five percent of a portion of that out of district tuition. Uh, and that can get very confusing as well. Are certain thresholds. So there's a, there's an education there too, where people are talking there's a bill right now to actually increase have fully funded mean ninety percent instead of seventy five percent of that amount over the threshold. I just realized I forgot the T in that box. I apologize. Circuit breaker is only used for, uh, portions of the cost for out of district tuitions, services and transportation only. There are some services that will be reimbursed for, um, but primarily out of district tuitions and transportation. So I think this is, uh, also some compelling data. We'll see. I wanted to look at again, a lot from the conversations we've had with about what does this mean, right? We keep saying over and over, the numbers are growing. We need more preschool teachers. I need three more sub separate pathways teachers. Why? Um, so this is some information. So this is a five year comparison. Red is right. Um, so we have two things. You have students with disabilities, preschool, um, rising. So so students is up fifty. A lot, but let's put that into perspective for a second, right? Up we have fifty students receiving services. That could be full day, that could be speech, that could be OT only, um, just the third bullet down, the the number of students that means they're with us for the full day. They need classroom support. And you can't put thirty kids in one classroom. I can tell you that right now, right? So you can't put thirty sub separate preschool kids in one room, right? So that thirty equals four to five classrooms at this point with with additional, right, services, speech, program assistance, all of those pieces. So I think that when you think about what that actually looks like is important to note. Um, our total number of students with disabilities is up one hundred and thirty six since the two thousand and twenty. And our number of sub separate students is up forty students from twenty twenty one. And again, those forty seven students two classrooms, right? Depending on the needs, it could be full classrooms. So this just again, for educational sake, right, this is, uh, oops. How circuit breaker is defined? And again, this is a lot for just information that you can refer back to, that you have, that that people can really understand what we're talking about when we say circuit breaker. The state sets the thresholds and FY twenty five threshold was fifty two, four, one, nine. So basically, the district is responsible for anything up to fifty two thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, no matter what. No matter what. Any tuition above fifty two thousand, that amount, you take seventy five percent of that amount. That is what a circuit breaker, that's what's eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement. So again, it, the way we talk about it is critical because if we talk about fully funded, people think that we get uh, our full tuition's back. What do we, what are we upset about? Well, we don't. Uh, and so, uh, all of the kids that go out, you get a portion of this, or at least you have eligible. And depending on, uh, as Member Willeth and I have been saying, depending on the year and how much money, uh, that number can fluctuate. We have definitely had years where we've only gotten sixty two, sixty five, sixty percent of that, um, additional cost back. Transportation has recently been added, uh, which is wonderful, transportation for out of district students. Again, this is not for students in districts. Uh, but the problem with that is there's no set formula for that. It's basically whatever's left over. Uh, is how is the best way to look at it? So this year it was at forty four percent and it was forty four percent of the total cost. So while it was less, it's a better way to look at the formula by saying it's just all of that transportation cost. And we're going to give you back forty four percent of whatever you've paid out. Makes sense to everybody? We're good? Okay. So this is, these are three, right now, current examples from Methuen in this situation. Three different, uh, out of district situations. You have a student at a district collaborative and for us that would be Crest, we're the members of, but we also have students at Valley and Seem Collaborative. But our member, member collaborative is Crest. Average tuition for one of those students is eighty nine thousand. That's that's base tuition for the year is eighty nine thousand dollars. For us, it costs twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars to transport. And there's an asterisk next next to that because in the in a district like Methuen, uh, we have the opportunity because we have more kids, we can, we can have one bus with five or six kids on it. So each student is costing twelve thousand dollars. That bus in total is probably costing seventy five, eighty grand. Right? So what other districts are experiencing is they have one kid going to a particular, they're paying a full seventy five thousand dollars for one bus. We do have some situations like that. Um, they're not as frequent in Methuen as they are in some of the smaller communities. But we do have situations like that where we have one student only going to an out of district placement. And so you have a tuition and you're paying the entirety of that bus for the year. So that's one situation. And then you have a day school, private day school, one twenty seven is an average tuition. And again, you know, we have students that we maybe have multiple students on a bus. Um, typical supports on a bus, uh, go into a private day, usually a bus monitor or a nurse is are the other two more frequent, um, costs. So that student is a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And then on the right side, you'll see how it's calculated for reimbursement. And then a typical residential, three thousand, three hundred and two thousand dollars. That's, that's the cost of the full residential. Obviously, there's no transportation. And you'll see how that is calculated for reimbursement.
On our next go around of this, th- this is fantastic. And this is what I think we talked about a couple of meetings ago. It's scary how expensive potential. Would it be show kind of like a recap on what that total was versus anticipating for twenty six? Because I think this has a very strong narrative.
Yep.
Sees it because the the conversation has been, the school is spending money, the school is we are spending money and here it is.
Correct.
Would go a long way in being a nondisputable that can combat that conversation. Is it doable? You can tell me no. I mean, I'm okay.
So I guess I'm unsure exactly what you're asking.
So like, there are these three assume we know how many how many kids were at day schools and how many kids were residential. Average, uh, the the spend for the current fiscal year is X. We're anticipating having this many kids next year based on these numbers because I don't know if we know what the increase is yet.
We do know most
we're anticipating these numbers and then we can show
A lot of them, yeah.
We can show the difference.
We have
Oh.
Those numbers are in
Included here.
Yeah.
We're going to get to that slide. No, this is fabulous. Keep asking all the questions. I did all this anticipating what all of you were going to ask so that we can make sure everything was answered. Do you understand? See how this is going? Question, Member Shabilia, as we go through.
I have nothing to say in you.
Yep, okay. Other questions in this one? Again, just example to show something tangible and concrete. All right. So now we're going to get into, uh, what we are presenting tonight. So yes.
Good question. Um, could you also get us, um, how much it costs for a separate versus how much it costs for a say with just costs for a gen ed student? So that we can see the in district impact also?
Those would be best estimated costs, right, as students, okay. Yep. Well, you said, one more time, sub separate? What were the three tiers?
Sub separate.
Yeah.
Say one special ed service versus a gen ed student who's not receiving any services.
So fully included, maybe?
Yes.
Sub separate versus gen ed with no service?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to work that our team has done uh, what we believe our schools need to continue to move forward. So understanding, uh, that we have some finances and defined some of our, um, you know, challenges at this point. It's also imperative that my job as superintendent and the principals behind me and the central office staff also make sure that we communicate to you and the public what we believe we need to best service our students. And we talked about that as a committee, I would say, over the past four months uh, during our meetings about the fact that this is important, right? This is a really important part of the process and what our team has spent the most time doing. Um, so looking at class sizes, reducing where they can, looking at uh, looking at, uh, new needs, looking at different needs, looking at, um, different programs. Uh, you know, all of those things come into play here. So, uh, you'll see in your narratives, uh, for the school committee that you have uh, in the executive, uh, summary, uh, three sections, specific section, section, student supports, professional development and operations is sort of how we've divided the, uh, the budget just to for talking points tonight. And then the principals will come up and talk about their buildings. But for student support, these are all the things that fall under the student support category. Um, in the preliminary budget that you're going to see tonight, we have preserved class size. This is something that we did not unilaterally, uh, reduce to a point that didn't make sense to us. That would be, I think, further conversations with this committee. Um, but maintaining that target class size of, uh, eighteen to twenty two in the grammar schools and not exceeding twenty five everywhere we possibly can. And then a target class size in kindergarten, fifteen to twenty. And we have lost, uh, the kindergarten program assistance, uh, for several years now. But keeping those kindergarten classes as small as possible is really one of the best ways that we have seen to be able to support the challenges that are coming in, uh, so early. As those classes get bigger, it comes, becomes more challenging at the early age for students who have never been to school before.
I do recall during the prior budget cycle, which was a very difficult budget cycle, that we had day increase class sizes by twenty five percent. Is that, is that accurate? Because we represented numbers of an increase in in class sizes.
We had increases in class sizes in places in the upper school. We did sizes at all in K four.
Okay, so this was, it was, it was, um, piecemeal.
It was piecemeal, definitely piecemeal.
Okay.
So so what you're going to see tonight is that we, you're going to see ranges between, and you're going to see some, you're going to have those anomalies where they're to twenty five, right, right off the bat. Um, but you're going to see eighteen to twenty two everywhere we possibly could maintain those class sizes. That's what we, that's what our target has been.
Okay, because the historic law that we
Okay, because the historic law that we achieved was twenty students on average per class.
That's, that's about what we have right now. Again, upper school is a little bit bigger.
Upper school, okay, alright. So there was a differential, and there was a twenty-five percent increase in those classes.
You're not, you're not incorrect.
So you, with the budget, regardless of what's happening, we anticipate civilized class size?
We're going to go Where we to you tonight what we believe is going to be able to maintain and move forward our district.
Okay.
This is what we're doing right now, right? So, so to make sure the changes in the buildings, again, reductions, additions, things like that, that we need for student services, for student delivery programs. Uh, that's what we're presenting to you tonight. Job as a collective whole is to figure out what we are going to keep and not keep. Uh, and again, that's a statement for us a school committee and an administration. Uh, my, my values, our values are reflected in what I'm presenting to you right now. About what we truly believe, if we want to continue to move this district forward, we need to maintain class in twenty-two the best we can.
So having a problem with don't have a problem necessarily with having a wish list. If you present things that we need for the school district. I'm having going forward really have to face reality. Unless there's going to be a sea change on Beacon Hill, I'm not seeing going to be a dramatic I would love to be proven wrong on it. And I think it's going to be a tug-of-war between the state house see, and the local community is going to be caught in the middle. Um, but I, I really want to make sure that we try to be as realistic as possible with these class sizes. That's the case, and again, this is a fluid situation.
That, again, that tonight is for the discussion.
I understand that, but
Yeah, it would not be, I mean, as superintendent, I would not sit here and present a budget that I think would decimate the work what my value is and what I think your value is. The conversations are going to get right? But, but as a leadership team and a superintendent, I, I'm not going to present to you, and I, I would say I'm not sure it's such a wish list. This is what we believe we need to move forward, right? I think when you hear from the principals, we're not talking about like new programming and, um, you know, situations like that. I think you'll hear that from the principals about what we're looking at, we need, and what we can reduce. I think that's part of the whole process.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, also in the student support making sure that we have our special education. You'll see, uh, that throughout the narratives in the schools. Um, we're also looking at, which if you recall, principals go through details of this position, but you all, in the fall, uh, approved adding an evaluation team facilitator.
Very briefly, just a quick housekeeping item. So YouTube feed is completely down, and we're having issues apparently with Comcast. Folks are recording.
Recording, okay.
So the meeting will be for anybody who's having technical difficulties. Continue, sorry.
Yep. Um, so the evaluation team facilitator, if you facilitator, if you recall, we added to the Marsh fall, uh, and largely due our special education administrator position. We have not changed that position in twenty years. And I have prefaced, uh, a lot of what I'm saying tonight changes in special education and the needs and the programming. Has the largest sub-separate program in the grammar schools. Next largest sub-separate program. And with those sub-separate programs lot of program that makes it really challenging for those SEAs to actually handle all of the compliance and the meetings, and also the programic, programmatic oversight of those sub-separate programs. So you'll see that in the narratives of the other schools tonight. And the explanation for those are exactly the same. Uh, our special education administrators are, uh, basically just doing compliance and meetings all of the time. The lack uh, of time that they have to be able to put into the programming is what we're hoping to gain back. So again, you'll see those in the narratives, uh, but we, you know, we don't, we won't have the principals actually go through that again. Unless you have specific questions, feel free to ask them. Um, so we, you will see the adding of media center specialists. Again, this has been a, a, a pretty large debate of something that we wanted to upon. We spent thousands of dollars this year rebuilding uh, you will see those in this budget that is, uh, before you tonight. Um, and one of the biggest ones, which, uh, Ms. Bozek and I can, can talk about now, and you'll see it, uh, again, a couple of times, but we are define the pathways program at the Marsh. Um, we, we feel strongly that the program is starting to grow, uh, sort of how it has been defined, and we want to redefine that program as an alternative school. And what that means is that we would have, uh, a separate schedule for that, not, not a day schedule, but they wouldn't necessarily have specialists at the same times. What really complicates the programming for our pathways students is the, the level and amount of services they need. And many of them cannot access grade level curriculum material, time, space. Um, and so, uh, we're looking to do, again, a full redefine. One of the things that we are reaching out for, we tried to do this last year, it did not pan out to be successful. Um, for a variety of reasons, we reached out to, um, one of our partners collaborated help us with just the kindergarten classes we had at all. We had five kindergarten classes from preschool going to the Marsh, and we felt very strongly uh, that that was way too many classrooms, uh, to be adding to the Marsh School and the staff there. So we housed rooms at Branch Street. So it was a shared responsibility a little bit on the, uh, related service providers, uh, and the staff. So during the time with the two classrooms at Branch Street, uh, Ms. Bozek and Ms. Blanchett were able to build a very positive partnership with Constellations. They are a contracting provider that focuses with ASD. And so they have really helped us with the programming in that classroom. Those classrooms, I think we saw a uh, one-eighty of how the classroom started to what it looks like now with their support. Um, so I did ask Ms. Bozek to start the conversation with them a few had this before programming, and I'm leaving out five-eight because that is just a little bit different. It's really the, the K four that is exploding right now, uh, and they need a little bit more attention. And so they a great proposal that would add, uh, behavior
Technician?
Behavior technician and an ABA instructor.
Mm-hmm.
That's good. Um, to each classroom that really would for the programming and behavior supports of each classroom of eight to nine kids alongside our staff. Right? So that, that, this is twofold. It's building the program, but it's also building our capacity. Right? So to have this partnership at this great amount, it would, we after it is something that we talked a lot about during negotiations as well with our own staff, right? Everybody knows that a big part of our the contracted service providers coming in, coming out, right? It, it's been a challenge for everybody. This, we feel an opportunity to, again, service the kids that we need, but also build our own couple of years, we're not going to need this level if I said that correctly. And just to put this in perspective, because obviously this comes at a cost. Right? So their contract for K through four presented to provide us with staffing and professional development is two-point-four million dollars. And again, to put this in perspective, we have fourteen students going out of program tuition only million dollars. Tuition only. That's not transportation at this point. Uh, so again, just putting that into perspective, if I had to send these eighty-five kids to an out-of-district setting, oh, I don't, I don't know right now, but, um, that's not our goal. So we have been fortunate enough to have capacity, uh, in some of our, uh, schools to be able to build these we've built it and, uh, it keeps growing. And so we need to think about doing something differently. And this is what we're trying to present to you tonight that we do think will work, uh, and work well. The hard part about this one, this is a hard part, is that if we don't come to some agreement about this contract, it's all going to be for naught. Because if they don't, if we don't agree to this soon, they will not be able to get us the staff and agree to secure that. The longer we wait, the less likely this is going to be successful. So just keep that in mind for tonight, uh, that that is something that needs to somewhat be in the forefront of our conversation if we're going to move forward with it or not. And again, that's not a decision for tonight. I'm just saying that's, this is, these are some things that need to be priority when we're talking about our next steps.
So I had two questions, and then you just gave me a new one, and more importantly,
Okay.
if they need to make decisions for staffing, how is that going to be impacted by a late June final budget approval from the council?
So, so they, I, and again, I'm saying, just speaking in these situations, that we would have to sign a contract with them contingent upon appropriate funding, but that they would need some assurance from us that we're making this a priority and that we're going to fund it.
Okay.
Wrong in that, Ms. Bozek?
That's correct.
Is there any only vendor of this sort? Because there was no mention of thirty-B, and I don't remember seeing any bids go out for this. Did we have an exception for that, or? It is?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
It is, and there are some other folks to Ms. Bozek. The fact that we actually have firsthand knowledge of the work that they did with us so that we could see what it's going to look like is, is we don't have that with any other group to the extent that we have it with Wisconsin population and the same group of kids they're going to be working with next year.
And I'll
Can add to that.
Well, and I'd also add, several years ago, we had a consultant from Melnark, New England, come in, evaluate the sub-separate program for ASD. Back was, we had the recommendations they had, we put into place, that didn't help us build capacity. Um, and like Dr. Quong said, we've had an opportunity to see this firsthand, be very successful in one of the kindergarten classrooms at the Marsh. I'm not Marsh, sorry, Branch Street, um, because we, we wanted to try something different, and it literally was a complete one-eighty. Um, staff support, cohesive, cohesiveness, immediate, um, embedded professional development, training to build, um, behavior supports and capacity.
Awesome. I like, I like the idea of doing new a huge help for everyone. Um, but going back to the statement you made earlier about the kindergarten classes that are currently divided between Marsh and all of those kindergartners now from both the ones in the building at the Marsh and the ones at Branch Street are going to go to first grade.
Correct.
Presumably at the Marsh.
Correct.
But when I look at the Marsh
Don't get ahead of yourself. You're getting ahead. Getting ahead of me.
Well, this is why I wanted to Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll
I'm kidding, you can ask.
No, I'll withdraw. Save my question and
Maybe I'll answer it before you get a chance.
Alright.
Maybe. I don't know, I
We'll hear from, uh, member Maxwell. We have the
So this, um, this specific program is another contracted service that we would be hiring. My only concern with that is that we we put out a lot of money for contracted services when it, but is there a specific reason we're not bringing those specialists to our district and paying them rather than paying a service? Because I'm sure it would be cheaper to hire the teacher than it is to hire a contracted service.
Except what they're giving us is full oversight of programming that we don't have unless district, and we just don't have the staff capacity. So I could post for thirteen, twelve? Twelve behavior technicians and twelve ABA instructors. But I don't have anybody to run oversight over what that programming looks like. To build our capacity in, in those classrooms and continuity between the grade levels.
I think I'm just confused. So what, where, where does that twelve
There are K four
Classroom?
sub-separate ASD classrooms. Well, there will be at the
Okay.
And to do that going to see is we've removed one of the program assistants from the budget. Remember, we have seven right, so we're not talking about right? So we've removed one of those positions, so we have two program assistants. Those program assistants. Plus this, this provider and training capacity. We can off the service provider and supports. And capacity of our own staff.
Didn't we just hire behavioral? Um, I think it was, yeah. For Wouldn't, couldn't they lead that program?
Yeah, so risks and crisis intervention with the, uh, sub-separate programming at the Tenny or the, uh, at any of the schools actually, ASD program. So they had a totally different response. So the crisis interventionist at the Marsh does support they and students, but not in the way where you're talking about programming programming, what the kids actually need to learn every day. Response when they're having trouble and dysregulated.
I'm just concerned with how much money we're spending help when we should be doing we're sending a lot of kids out of district for things in district, and we're not focused on that. And I, I think I just wanted to make that known. I, I don't know why there are so many expenses for contracted services that we can offer here, so.
Vice chair?
Are we going to be redefining program a program versus a sub-separate? So, um, one of the draws to the day schools a twelve-month program. If that's the case, and we are going to define this as a public then are we going to make this a twelve-month program so that we don't need to send the what parents who are looking to get their kids out of the district are looking for? Is that twelve-month program?
Great question. I'm going to start it and then jump in. So that is a, a conversation that Ms. Bozek and I have been having about the twelve versus school year, um, for a variety of reasons. Um, I think for us, I don't know if we feel comfortable committing to that with having seen that that may be something we leave alone for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, if that were right? What we're looking at and what we're trying to redefine, then for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we talk about it being a twelve-month. And that's where we've landed so far in our conversation.
Well, and to add to that, the purpose of us doing this with Constellations is to build the remove the contracted providers as we've built the capacity with our own staff. Given that there's profession part of this contract that would go into play this coming summer with the teacher assistants to um, to start them before the school year. So to commit to program right now wouldn't make sense because we need to build in that training and then carry it through for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, as long as we're looking into that, because I think the twelve-month program is going to keep more kids in district, that we're going to be able to afford better. Um, and to add those eight weeks' worth of programming cheaper than the out-of-district cost even at a public day.
Member Donovan?
We just circle back. Um, obviously, there's a great deal of how many
How many people will be coming to Methuen from Constellation?
So there's twelve behavior technicians.
Twelve. Ooh, okay.
One for each classroom.
Okay.
Twelve ABA instructors.
Okay.
Three BCBAs.
Wow.
That again, for those members, you'll see that all listed in the narrative. For this sort of redefine.
And I think it's worth noting that many of similar. BCBAs, it's been impossible to hire them. It's been so hard to find people to fill those positions for whatever reason. Is there any way this would make an impact on the inclusion services, those students? Because I know last year was, okay, not like when you talk about training. There would be no. That to the staff that works in that area.
Be very specific to the staff. The sub-separate kids.
Okay.
Because part of this redefining of it as well is including adaptive specials.
Got it.
So we already have adaptive PE right now at Branch Street because we needed to provide specials there. We have adaptive music coming in once a of our own staff have been doing adaptive art with the two kindergarten classrooms.
Okay. And my next question is, let's go back to that media center. When you say adding media centers. Is that model? Like the old time?
Dr. Golovski, I'm going to turn that right over to you.
Our vision was a little different. I the, the older version where it was a traditional specialist cycle where the students would visit once every some odd days. We're also engaged. For activities, um, both after school and perhaps during the wind block or the school day. So we envisioned potentially that person. Little different, maybe a later starts that they could stay after day, after the school day to offer clubs or activities. That would involve research and creativity and perhaps some STEM elements. But we are looking for that, that role to fill a lot of our needs. So certainly not only promoting reading and literacy across all disciplines, but also interacting with primary sources. As information, evaluate sources. That would be something that they would be supporting teachers in and with during the school day. So certainly some collaboration about around themes or units and tailoring subject areas. Teaching.
Yeah, that, that was one of my questions. So you could see these certified teachers, they would be certified, correct? Okay, pushing into the class. Lower, upper, I mean, those hours can be tough. Low, what do you think?
I think that's why you're talking about a completely different hour structure.
And doing some stuff after school.
Yes.
School hours. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Shabilia?
Or having these folks come in. Is there an opportunity? Some of our. Back with the assistance of this team? Like you give us this fourteen for one point seven. And my assumption was, first looking at it was, oh, we're spending two point four, but we're saving one point seven by bringing those fourteen kids.
Not necessarily, but.
She says quietly. Would be to transition the students back. It's not going to be right out of the gate because we need to build the program.
Are we, are we thinking? Like what is best case scenario?
It depends on the individualized student, the conversations. It's a team discussion. Parents are part of that. It would be work bringing parents. Revisit the program, tour, all of those places, and then they would have to consent.
Okay, all right.
Definitely the goal. Always the goal. Okay. All right, I'm going to have Dr. Golovski talk about our STEM supervisors as well, which this is something that has been deferred for the past. We are, we are bringing it back up again, but I think there's some new information that could be very helpful as to why we need these positions.
Sure. So you'll see on, on the slide and in your binder as well, we reference the district review that occurred in twenty nineteen from, or twenty eighteen, rather, from DSE where they came out and stayed. We. And in their report, which was published in twenty nineteen, I have a couple quotes there where they found that our grammar schools were particularly thin administratively. And they thought it would be really challenging to provide staff, students and families with the support they need academically in pursuit of excellence without those additional people. And they were a fan of the structure at the high school and recommended that we model the grammar schools similarly. So over time, in the past few years, we've added the humanities supervisor who helps oversee English and social. Supervisor who supports our multilingual learners, but also the teachers. Supervisor would really round out that. It's some. Science support. Critical juncture here with math and science and an exciting one at that. We've been pursuing some grants to bring on Open SciEd as a science curriculum in the upper schools. Pleased to announce that of all of our four schools who applied, were all really strong contenders, went through a series of interviews. Ultimately, the Marsh was and the Timony has some teachers who are going to start the onboarding as well. So that's a three-year grant process. Make sure implementation is strong. So it would be really critical to have someone in the buildings to provide that support and oversight. And the understanding. GS and Tenny. Bring some activities this year with Open SciEd and one-eight and will hopefully roll in the following year. So we're, we're really excited about that. Math as well. It's been a little while since we spent some time looking at our curriculum, undergoing a review and streamlining on that end too. We're very well aware of our students' needs and really feel like that's something both schools, teachers. Administrators could benefit from.
Next.
I just have a quick question. I, I don't. Trying to think of how to say this. What is the benefit to hiring or bringing on STEM supervisors? And what has been the benefit of bringing on the humanities supervisors? Because you don't. I don't, I don't even remember when we brought in the humanities supervisors, but has there been a significant change? Has anything, has scores, testing scores changed? Has the productivity of student, you know? Progress changed?
I'm sure the principals could attest to this too when they come up as well. But the humanities supervisors, I believe, came on three years ago, three years ago. So since then, we went in the upper school to having what felt to be a piecemeal curriculum to high-quality instructional materials, five through eight. So every school, every teacher has had training in those materials, implement them regularly. And we're currently undergoing a K-four review of our curriculum for ELA. In terms of civics, all eighth-grade classes are participating in the civics projects, Generation Citizen PD. And each of those humanities supervisors has, it's twenty to thirty, depending on the building staff that they evaluate. So they do the observations and all the forms. And they also perform supervisory roles beyond that. They also support our tiered systems of support. So when students, we notice maybe having some difficulty in some subject areas and teachers are a little stuck on what to do and the students don't seem to be making progress, the teachers gather the data and it's very much the humanities supervisor and the ELE supervisor who sit and review the data and talk about potential interventions and advise the teacher how to, to maybe seek a different route and then come back and see what, if there's been any success on that end. So on that note, the STEM supervisor would be awesome to have as part of that support team to help advise what's going on that way. And they've also been great as, as coaches, although they're supervisors and providing teachers a sounding board and helping to oversee pacing and use of supplementary materials when appropriate.
So based off of the last three years with the humanities supervisor, we haven't, we haven't seen any increase in our test scoring over the past three years. Is that?
No, that's not true.
Okay, so we have seen an increase in our test scores and our student progress since having that humanities supervisor?
Yeah, we brought on the, the benchmark testing. And then the reading support block. So when the students take those benchmark tests, the humanities supervisors are the one, ones that pour over those results and group the students for their support blocks and then advise the teachers on how best to direct the students during that time. That system's entirely new.
Okay. I think one thing to add, we, we would not be where we are with the curriculum implementation without the supervisors as well. That is not something the assistant superintendent can do in a district this size. So the fact that we worked with TNTP, again, you guys came on sort of in the middle of that process, but that was a process that the previous assistant superintendent and I started after COVID. It, it is night and day where the curriculum implementation is in this district and the materials that teachers are using in the district.
I just, I just wanted to ask those questions because I want to make sure that it's not like a micromanagement system, that teachers are able to teach the way they teach without being.
Yeah, their instructional, their instructional method and delivery is theirs to own. The materials that they use is ours, right? And so every, everybody has their own personality in delivering that instruction. But it really should not be the teacher's responsibility to go and find lesson plans, day-to-day and materials. That's our job. And I think we've provided the teachers over the past three and a half years, an enormous amount of materials in the ELA, both upper and lower.
Member Donovan?
Okay, so let's talk about having an additional supervisor. Your question makes me think about the, our literacy initiative that started, what, three years ago as well?
Yeah, pre, right after COVID.
Right after COVID. I, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, but will that program continue? Is, this is all included in the budget, the, the focus?
Of course.
Okay.
It's our strategic plan. So things, things don't go away.
Yeah, I hate to.
Your strategic plan is right in the front of your budget book, right? Because this all has to line up. And this one hundred percent everything that we're presenting here as well aligns with a strategic plan.
Okay, and those literacy.
It's all in there.
Numbers have really been pretty impressive through the last few years. Thank you.
Member, will that?
Thank you. Now, at this stage, these are advisories to the school district from DSE. When is it going to be with teeth and enforcement or if we get any type of warning letters? Because what the problem I'm having is, is that they give us these advisories and we already kind of know what we should be doing at the local level, but they're not helping us in terms of the, the funding. Because I know with the CTE, there is an opportunity for additional grant funding. To me, that's in the same wheelhouse of trying to, with the science, technology, engineering, mathematics. And I think to a certain extent, it would add esteem with the arts. To me, if you have CTE grants targeting a school district, because you see the future vocations and it's a, to me, it's an economic security and national security. The same thing with STEM is to me, it's, it's a national security issue. If you don't have students that are involved in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and I'm a big advocate for the arts as well, right? That's something too, that there should be grant funding to say, okay, you're going to have these supervisors overseeing instruction and improving the curriculum. And I know in, in other school districts, they have, they provide kids with opportunities through nonprofit foundation to entice the kids to do like summer programs or during school vacation weeks in the STEM fields. So I, I think there's a disconnect of they will give us the advisory. I think we're well aware of the deficiencies, but they don't provide the funding to deal with the deficiencies. And they did it with the CTE grants, but they won't do it with the STEM. So that's a, you know, another disconnect that I'm feeling, but I just wanted to add my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, keep going. So another bucket of, I think our last one here, operations, safety and facilities. So we're looking at, again, we had some transportation support in the past. I just, I, I can't reiterate again, just like everybody else will reiterate, but to have the assistant superintendent of finance and operation be the only person in the district who works with transportation, takes phone calls and is the contact for NRT is such an incredible challenge. What I'm also asking Mr. Goslin to balance all of our hundred-million-dollar budget and grants and payrolls and everything else. It is unusual that a district our size does not have support in the transportation department. A neighboring town that is not that much larger than us has seven people in their transportation department. Just to put some context to it. So again, it's about how do we, right? Because this is, this is what I have to look at and what we have to look at is how do we run this district efficiently? I can't just eliminate everybody who isn't student-facing because things will not run. And I know we all know that, but that's another piece of this when I'm looking at trying to make this district the most efficient, more efficient than it already is. And so you will see that in there as well. Our technology support staff, we do have one retirement in that department. We are asking for two tech support staff. We are so understaffed in that department for the amount of devices we had. I put some numbers in here that Ms. Lopez gave me, our director of technology with that, which I thought was really important. So you could see just how many devices are going through the hands of our staff, our students. It's, it's remarkable. And right now, there are two support technicians in this, two support technicians in this district that solely focus on devices. And then we have a data, you know, we have other tech department staff who focus on the network, who focus on the operations, who focus on the data management and state reporting. Those are very specific skills in different areas. So that's something that you will see as well. And then I also have there, this is also another position deferred. I don't, I, I won't go through that again, but I also have the assistant superintendent of finance and operations managing transportation facilities and all finance and operations, again, as a one-person, one-person department. So that director of finance was something that was recommended several years ago. We put it in the budget in twenty-four and twenty-five and it was not filled. So something else that you'll see in your budget books, this is something that was certainly heard, reflected upon loud and clear to me and the team, something the mayor and I have discussed as well. We are presenting to you a reorganization, not massive, but enough that we feel could make a difference in the district. The reorganization of our facilities and maintenance areas. It would result in adding three building-based custodians and two and a half maintenance staff, just when you're talking about FTEs district-wide. The, the organizational chart that you see, one of the things that we would really like to see come to fruition is having a full-time maintenance person in a building and not get pulled. One of the things that we are experiencing is the current directors of facility is the only one, when the roof leaks, when I have an emergency, when the boiler starts leaking, he is pulled away for the entire day, days, weekends, nights, whenever those things happen. And yes, there are some maintenance folks who can help, but now those folks get pulled from the school buildings to do any of the maintenance that was happening in the buildings. And so it's a vicious cycle of the fact that I'm pulling people to do support things. And now that time that that could be spending in the buildings doing the maintenance and upkeep gets lost. And so that is something that we had some significant conversation about. And the maintenance. And the maintenance supervisors would be under the direction of the director of facilities and assistant superintendent of finance and operations and would be, uh, skilled unaffiliated folks so that they are also being called at different hours. They would have to have certain certifications. We're considering HVAC is the most important one right now with all of the issues that we're having with cooling towers, heating and HVAC systems, uh, and really having to know what the systems are in all six buildings. So that is presented, there's again detail on the positions in the narrative. But again, this is something that we have heard loud and clear from the community, from this committee, from the health task force. I would also say, uh, just to make sure that I say it out loud, we did meet with the custodial union about this restructuring. And there obviously is some, uh, items here that would have to be negotiated. So some of that, uh, is not, you know, done yet. We're presenting ideas right now to see how folks feel about those. Again, we have thought about it and I feel that this restructuring, uh, would be a great start. The three building adds would be the Tenny, the Timoney and the CGS. And the CGS is because we actually removed one last year, um, from the budget that we want to make whole. So they're actually one down more than any other school. And the Tenny and Tim, Tim, Timoney and Tenny are very large and in the past have been asking for additional custodians. And we have not been able to put those in the budget either.
So it's a bit concerning because we have a very big retirement coming up. And you just mentioned how that particular individual is sometimes pulled away for a day, days, weekends. And after all the money that's been spent, and thankfully we have a mayor and a council who approved the free cash allocation to kind of help our team play catch-up, because they, I mean, let's just call a spade a spade. They've been short-staffed for a long time. I, I'm worried that we're not preparing ourselves to maintain what we've created. And I don't know if there's anyone who can speak to that, because I'm, I'm, I'm open to being wrong. But I look at this and I've walked, I mean, you and I have walked the timony more times than I can count. Like I just, I don't know how you look at this and then think about all the activities that these folks are being pulled away from, especially within this basketball in the building or wrestling and all the other things that they're not able to do their actual job for because they're doing all the ancillary things because they're being pulled away. I just, I'm hoping that we can hear from someone who may be able to speak to this directly at some point, not, not tonight, but at some point.
But I can, I could add to that. So, um, something that would be, um, also in your narrative under central office is where this is written and kind of laid out. Some of the ideas that we have is, is to be creative about these new positions. Meaning, um, one of the ideas that we bandied about was, do we need a night foreman, right? Which is the, sort of the language that folks use in other school districts, because our senior can't work, uh, a 16-hour day. So how do we make sure that we have some oversight at night with somebody who can actually be, uh, the liaison for whoever's coming in the building? Something like that. So those are some of the ideas that you'll see spelled out, but also some of the ideas that we talked about when we met with the union. Of like, how could that work and what could that look like, right? What shifts do we need, things like that. And those are some things that we would have to really kind of iron out together on what that would look like, but we haven't lost that. And you'll see a little bit of that in the narrative of the fact that we need something a little different in that second shift. You know, how do we redefine that? I think that's what you're getting at. I, you know, I'm not sure if I answered that. Or at least we're thinking about the same things that you just asked.
Yeah, I mean, close enough for right now, but I'm sure there'll be more as we get into it.
Definitely.
We have the vice chair, member Maxwell and member Willette. So we'll start with the vice chair and member Dzoglio.
So the organization chart looks good to me, but I want to know if the union had input into creating this organization? Or did you create it and bring it to the union? Like, were, were they involved in this? Does, does this make sense to them? And is this what they think they need?
So we did bring it to them after we thought about it with not formal meetings. So in the, in the same thing, same vein that member Chabilla just said, like, this is a start, right? This, these are from conversations who can kind of see the whole district and what is happening in the district. Cause I think one of the things that we realized when we sat down with them too is not every building knows what's happening. They just know they've lost a maintenance guy for four days and they're not quite sure, like the roof, you know what I mean? It, those things are happening as well. So, um, we absolutely, uh, have committed to maintaining those conversations as we go to see how this might work out, uh, and what sort of that flexibility is in the positions in the conversation.
I would just hate to agree to a budget for the maintenance.
I would say they were very positive when we met with them and were very, you know, um, supportive of certainly adding some positions back and restructuring. There was an understanding that they had, uh, when we met with them.
Okay.
That was positive.
Yeah, I just don't want to fund something and then have them say this isn't what we want or need. So I just want to make sure that they're having input into this.
Member Maxwell?
So what is the difference between what we have now and I, I know? What do we have now for custodians? This is a two-part question. What do we have now for custodians versus what we're looking at?
So there's one less custodian at the Tenny, Timoney and CGS than what you're looking at here. And that two, the arrow that's pointing to maintenance supervisors two, that's new.
Okay, so we're only bringing on one additional custodian?
Three.
Well, per school.
For the Tenny, Timoney and CGS.
So just one and I think that, um, and what do you, what do you do? Three, three and three? Is that the shifts? Is it morning, afternoon, night?
No, it's, it's first shift, six to two, second shift, 10 to two, two to 10. Then there's a split shift in the middle.
So how many custodians would be on at night, let's say? If there were nine custodians, how many would be on at night?
Five. You can't even, that's okay.
With the split shift, it'd be, I believe, five.
And there are four now?
Correct.
And it's obvious that we need a significant amount more than what we have now. Right? To maintain what the cleaning companies have done?
There's also no pot of gold at the end of the rainbow too. So we have to find a happy medium. I think the added maintenance staff dedicated to each building would be a huge help during the day. Being able to, you know, fix those things that break during the day that they can't get to when they're getting pulled out of the building. I think just having those dedicated staff would make a huge difference.
So if something doesn't break in their school, are they reassigned to help clean the building?
There, there's always something to do in the building. These are really big buildings.
I just, I feel like we need more custodians than what we have or what's being offered here.
This is the first of many conversations.
Okay.
Member Willette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to know the historical timeline for the reductions. Um, I've heard the mayor mention that the custodian ranks went from 70 down to 46. I want to break down, historical breakdown of those numbers. In terms of custodians versus maintenance, I need a breakdown of those numbers, um, just for my edification. Secondly, in terms of the, the rental fees, um, I've always been an advocate for the hybrid approach of still having the, the high-capacity, high-traffic schools, having some type of, of cleaning apparatus from outside vendors. Maybe not to the comprehensive extent that we had before, but we still will have gaps of, um, holiday vacation time, uh, sick leave. Things that will occur and gaps between the schools. I, I think the Timoney and, and the Tenny to me were the most problematic schools in the, the high-traffic schools. So I want to look at the rental fees and find if we could have some type of hybrid approach to cleaning. And again, I, I think it's a good start talking about the maintenance staff. I think that's paramount. Because I hear every day about, uh, repaired deficiencies. And that leads to the final comment is that I think we really do need to have better reporting, uh, to the school committee. And that's an ongoing conversation. And it has to be an ongoing process of reporting and not having it be just simply whistleblowers and things that materialize at the last second. If it's something that needs to be addressed, it should be reported to the school committee. There needs to be a better, uh, reporting mechanism. So again, the timeline is again, I came back to the school committee, uh, last January. And prior to that, I did not serve in any elected capacity. And I had to come back and clean up a major mess and I don't appreciate it. Secondly, the rental fees, if we need to increase it and talk about a hybrid approach, I, I'm still entertaining that. Because I think look at the Timoney and the Tenny, uh, were catastrophes. And again, we are making improvements. I want to say that for the record, working with the mayor, we are making improvements. But I want, I don't want this, let this fester. So four years from now, someone approaches me and said, oh, you hear about the schools again? That's a, that's the final aspect of it is that we should have a better reporting system to, to school, uh, committee. So, thank you.
Member Dzoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm happy that the night foreman, um, was put in. Cause I know I've, I've been doing my research and I've talked to you about, um, night, night, uh, shift supervisors. The thing about it is, and I know the, the union reps, uh, president and vice president is here. I would like to have their take on this, um, opinion. I know for a fact that the Timney, I don't know if I can bring them up to us, because they're requesting adding three to the building. I, I, if I recall, the Timney would request maybe two to three extra custodians if I was sitting in that re, meeting. So there's still going to be three, too short still, if I'm correct, from that meeting with, when we went in November. They requested that they needed three to maintain the building, if I'm correct.
I'm not sure what meeting you're referring to.
Meeting when we sat with Mr. Reeves in his office. It was Mr. Chabilla. That meeting. If we recall. But Ian, I, I, I. Okay. Well, I asked how many, how many custodians it would take to maintain this building, additional, um, custodians, and I heard three. I remember that. I have my notes. I can bring my notes next meeting. Um, so that's just one thing, all right? And I could be wrong, but I heard three. So we're adding three to fit. We're still going to be short a certain amount. According to Mr. Willette, uh, the historical, uh, I know they possibly have it, the union. Will definitely have that because I've been asking that for several months and I haven't got the exact number, but I have it in my notes somewhere. I could possibly get that to you, um, tonight or tomorrow. I just got to go through all my notes. The real big thing I have about this, the procedural part. So for instance, um, health inspection reports. Will, uh, principals be able to receive their health inspection reports? Also, will you get a copy of the, uh? No, but it's procedural. Uh, it says oversight, district-wide oversight. Which if it is more district-wide oversight, that's a question. If it's in the budget, I should be able to ask that question. What does that mean by district oversight?
I think there have been many conversations about policies and procedures that would include what you're asking.
Yeah. Also, uh, the ticket system I still don't like and it's, but we pay for it. So I would like to know how much we're paying for that ticket system. From my opinion, it doesn't work, especially when the principals don't get the high priority, um, like situations in the school. I think if a principal is running a school, they should know exactly what's going on in their schools, especially the major things. So then it could go strictly to the director of facilities, like I said. And then also, which will go down the later road, but I really would like to know who's in charge of the pest and reports for each individual schools. So if the director of facilities and then these foremans and supervisors, are they in charge? Are the principals in charge? Especially if we're adding night foremans, which will probably be a union negotiation things, correct? With the shift supervisors. Well, I would like to know what they're in charge of, especially when regarding those pest and reports. So before I can vote on any of that, I would like to know specifically what their job descriptions are.
That would happen during negotiations with the custodians and obviously that would be something you guys would be involved in in executive sessions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, good to move on.
Okay. Cause it keeps getting good. Okay, so capital improvement and extraordinary maintenance. This was another, um, topic as well. In the last section of your binder, uh, you will see this, uh, information. And you'll also see the details of numbers and a, a detailed list of items that the team has put together for, uh, extraordinary maintenance programs and capital improvement and the years FY 26, 27, 28 by priority. Cause of course we'd like it all done at the same time, but that's not feasible either. But just for everybody's, you know, understanding, I think there's sometimes these, these terms can get tossed around and misunderstood. But extraordinary maintenance are items that are part of our operating budget. And they have a cost limit of a hundred and $50,000. So anything that goes over a hundred and $50,000 or something that we think will go over a hundred and $50,000 if we go out to bid, that is going to be shifted to the capital improvement plan, which is not part of the operating school budget. That money cannot be used as part of the operating school budget. So larger projects, roof replacements, HVAC systems, cooling towers, um, anything that, that is over a hundred and $50,000 goes on a capital improvement plan. And that is something that we have to do in conjunction with the city and all of the other departments. So there's one large capital improvement plan that has the school department, the fire department, the DPW, the, the city hall, right? All of these departments and working with the mayor and the CAFO, uh, that gets approved. Money gets, uh, typically bonded, uh, for those projects. And you'll see, um, in your capital improvement, so there's an FY 25. If you guys wouldn't mind just looking at your, um, page two of your narrative. So there's an FY 25, uh, capital improvement that, uh, I believe we're all aware of. But again, this is also for the public to understand that we have projects that the city has already approved. Money has been allocated and bids are out at this point for projects at the Timoney for carpet replacement. We are working through, uh, that is going to be a very large project. It is the school with the most carpet, uh, and the most carpet that needs to be abated. And so we're going through that process now. The marsh boilers need to be replaced. They are on their last leg. We had a really trying, uh, past four months or so with that. That also has been, um, approved by the city council. So there's two on here that we did just share with, uh, the mayor and the CAFO a week, uh, and a half ago. That are somewhat urgent matters, but were not part of the original FY 24. So we're still in discussion about how to get those fixed. There's an air handler at the Timoney that needs to be replaced and the water heaters at the CGS need to be replaced. It was noted as a, a board of health concern, the CGS heaters. We really have tried, um, Ian knows more, Mr. Goslin knows more of the details. But, uh, our staff has really tried, uh, their best to do everything to try to fix that, to maintain it, uh, to extend its life. And we are out of options at this point. So again, we just shared those with the mayor and the CAFO last week, but you can see that FY 25 is on a different sheet. FY 26, 27 and 28 start on page three, go through to page five. And you can see on the bottom, as those who are looking at the screen can see, uh, these are the costs we're looking at, uh, for the districts for extraordinary maintenance and capital improvement projects over the course of three years. And so the, the other piece to keep in mind with these projects is that for the most part, these projects can't be done until the summer, right? And we have eight weeks to get it done and that's it, uh, just because of the enormity of it, right? Changing carpets, replacing roofs, water, you know, uh, boilers, things like that are going to have to be done in the summer, which also. to have to be done in the summer, which also is a challenge for us. Because things have to be determined by this time of year to go out to bid and actually assure that we can get the work done in the summer. And even now, we're up against a timeline a little bit.
Yes. Looking at the FY 25 chart.
Yep.
The water heaters were flagged as a board of health concern and I noticed that that box is not checked.
Right.
That means it's not getting done in 25?
So we're not sure. So what I'm saying is that we tried, our, what we've shared with the, the CAFO and the mayor a week and a half ago was that our team has tried everything to resolve this issue and fix the problem and they're too old, we just, we can't fix it. So we presented to them, this was the first time we presented to them a week and a half ago, that's why it's not checked.
Okay.
So at that point, the fiscal year 25 CIP had already been presented and approved by the council. But nevertheless, the fiscal year 26 CIP, we're in the midst of preparing that imminently as part of the budget, so that's going to definitely be included.
Well, that's what I noticed, that when I flipped the CGS, I didn't see that in the list of items there.
Yeah, so depending on what those conversations are, and I should have started this whole thing with, our team is meeting with the CAFO and the mayor on a weekly basis at this point. So we're able to have some of these conversations, this will start shifting.
All right. Also, I just kind of want to, I want to call it out because this is, I want people to understand what a big deal these numbers are.
Uh-huh.
It's, you know, I actually whispered to the mayor, hey, good job, while you were presenting, because this is the first time, at least in my tenure in the city since 2015, that I've seen this much of a dedication to the schools. There's a lot of projects that have just kind of been neglected because there was no money. And this, this is huge and the fact that there's a three-year plan to get caught up is amazing and that's, you know, kudos to the mayor and his strategic planning and I hope that we can keep up with it, so we're not looking at, you know, a $10 million hit every year. And we can be a little proactive once we get through 2018, 2028 and kind of stay on top of things instead of playing catch-up perpetually.
Yeah, it is kind of remarkable, there were things that were on the 2016 capital improvement plan that we are on this piece of paper.
Yeah, that's wild.
So I just, I think there's been a constant, you know, we, we ask and we understand that millions of dollars of projects can happen every year, like there's an understanding of that as well.
But that's also when you end up with cracked boilers.
Agreed.
And then you have emergency expenditures.
Member Willett and Member DeZoglio.
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent, I know we were doing a separate discussion about the accelerated repair program and that's an ongoing process. Where are we in terms of the status of that application process? Have we received any feedback from the state? And I know that could be at least three years in waiting.
Right.
So I know the dynamic of you have immediate needs that need to be addressed and the mayor is working on those immediate needs and then you might have a three-year waiting period and trying to reconcile that immediate, intermediate, and long-term.
Yep.
So hopefully, you will give an update to the school committee and have some feedback from the state on it. I know we're running up against a timeline of deadlines, right, of, with the application process for the accelerated repair program.
Yeah, Mr. Goslin could probably answer that better because I know that he and Mr. Stella had to sit and submit some things to see if we even qualify.
Yeah.
So Mr. Stella spent most of, I think, Christmas vacation online with them, going over questions of our, our heating, our electrical, all our systems, and then we spent five days walking through each of the schools where we, they could verify that. They've taken all that information back, they have asked us for some updated information on the size of our plot land, et cetera, that we need to get to them before we can finalize any paperwork. Where that leads us, we'll have to let you know when we get there, but we are deep in the process.
Because I, I know in Haverhill, they were able to achieve 76% reimbursement from the state. And again, it was a three-year waiting period. And unfortunately, with these programs, I think one time they did a green program, I believe back in 2011, it was like $300 million. Imagine being able to invest in the schools of Massachusetts in a green program of $300 million. They only did it one time. So in terms of energy efficiency, I think it's kind of, kind of productive at the state level. You talk about mass save and all the money that's going into that and, you know, the schools and the utility costs, to be able to upgrade our boilers, roofs, insulation, the windows, all these factors, and we're scrambling for funds and we're competing against many other districts. And I think it was only one time they did a, a green energy program affiliated with the accelerated repair program in the school building authority. There's a disconnect on that too, but I appreciate that we're applying, it's not a panacea, and I know there's a commitment from the mayor and the city council and we have limited resources and we have the cash reserves, which should be dedicated to that purpose. And I want to emphasize that again, but I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio and the vice chair.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question about the parking lot lights and security cams, I know Member Willett has constantly asked if we are going to use the, the fee for parking for any of this and if so, when do we plan on starting to install them? By, how much, first of all, I should ask Ian, how much do we have in the revolving fund right now?
It's approximately $62,000.
So $62,000, that would basically pay half of, half of this right now, the 120.
Right.
So are we planning on using those funds for that?
If we can get the other 60,000, yes.
Okay.
So that would be one of the extraordinary maintenance items because it's under 120. So I forget which year I put it in there, but it is in there.
Yeah.
120. So totally intent, we need it, it's just a matter of funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice chair.
Can you explain why the fire alarms at the Marsh are going to cost 300,000 versus the other schools are at 80,000?
Mr. Goslin can.
I believe the $300,000 worst-case scenario, depending on what, right now, the system we have is obsolete and we're struggling to get all the parts to, to fix it. We're hoping that we can keep the wiring and replace all the parts with new, with new.
Panels.
Switches, camera, you know, all the, we're not sure we're going to, the wiring is going to be compatible, going to be good enough, so we may have to replace the whole thing, including the wiring. So we'd have to keep the existing one up and running while we go through probably about a four-week process of installing another one, because we can't have a building without a fire alarm. And then once the new one is done, we would switch over.
But why is that different than the other schools? So the Marsh is 300,000 and the other schools are 80?
We don't believe that the wiring is going to be good enough and the other ones, we're pretty sure they are. Yeah, that's a short story.
Member DeZoglio, a follow-up?
So now going off the vice chair's question, because of the wiring, how old is this wiring? Just like.
I can get more specifics on exactly the difference in the wiring, but that was from the original renovation back in 1996, 97?
So the follow-up question of that is, and I, I know it comes down to money and I totally understand, but I feel like this is this thing that we go down the road where the wiring doesn't work anymore and we have to install new, new wiring down the road and possibly cost more money for us in the future, would it be easier just to replace it with all new wiring?
That's what I said, if we have to replace all the wiring, it's going to be $300,000.
For each building, eventually?
For the Marsh is what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
And I will get you more specifics, because I may be using the wrong terminology, but I will get you more specifics.
So the good news is, I think we covered most of this, but challenges and considerations for this budget. So we presented some specific things to you, some challenges, and then I'm going to ask the principals to just share their additions, reductions, and the whys behind it. We've already talked about the fact that the chapter 78 is flawed. I think the other piece that I shared with the school committee at the last school committee meeting, I will share it again now for the public, but our foundation budget is based on October 1 enrollment, period, end of story, there is no second chances, there is no re-upload for enrollment. I even asked and got a, according to the regulation, it's a no, October 1 is it. And as of 3/20, we are 110 students up in enrollment from where we were on October 1st. That actually translates to about $2 million, just under $2 million of chapter 78 that we, the students are here and we won't see. So I guess we can't cry over spilt milk, however, just again, puts it into perspective of the enrollment ebb and flow that we don't have any way to receive those dollars. And we already talked about the Student Opportunity Act, our non-negotiable cost increase, as you'll see, special education, we talked about out of district, right? That out of district private tuition saw 14% increase and then 3.6 in 26, that's incredibly challenging for us with again, no additional funds that, that allows us to keep up with that pace, right? That increase. Our collective bargaining agreements across the board are all obligated increases and then our contractual increases for transportation, both regular and special education, as you all are aware, that bid came in over our cost that we spent in 25 and we're moving forward, that this budget contains that bid. We haven't finished the contract for that, but that's what we're going with. So there's an automatic increase there in transportation, again, for both departments. So the last piece that is also, we've alluded to already, but just to make it really clear, so the federal grants, again, I was hoping to get a little more, a little more indication by today if we were going to receive those or not, but I did not receive that. So those two grants combined, and I apologize, there's a typo in here, it's not 3.6 million, the total grants are 3.6 million, but the total amount of salaries is about 3.15. So there's other costs that are associated in those grants, especially when it comes to private schools and what we owe the private schools with those federal grants. So we are just, we're not sure. And so that also is a huge challenge for us this year, which is indicated on some of the slides next here. Yep.
So I cheated and I flipped through the rest of the pages to anticipate this not being a question. I can't help but notice that there is a number that is conspicuously absent from this packet, the city contribution number. Do we, do we know what that is yet?
We do not.
Not yet. We're working on that.
Do we have, do we have a timeline? Do you have a, like a, do you have a rah-rah goal there, Mr. Mayor?
As soon as humanly possible.
Oh, that's not a lot.
Great question, Member Chabilla, I didn't leave it out on purpose.
Well, I assumed not.
It would have been said, yes.
Also, the.
We're working with the city.
The 3.6 in the federal aid, so is my assumption accurate that if the mayor gives us all the money and all this goes according to plan and then we are surprised with this and it still comes through the door, we could add 3.1, whatever the number was, in additional
I, I love that.
Stuff?
Yeah, that's.
So like, and I, I know it's a pipe dream, you can smirk all you want, but glass half full, that, that could happen.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So this just summarizes what we just said, right? The significant increase, we have significant increases in contracted services, which we'll look at on the next page, contractual increase in transportation to the tune of about 2.5 million, CBAs, and then our enrollment, which again, is about a $2 million amount that we will not see for the total number of students we currently have. Another challenge that we're seeing, and it's at the very bottom, but I, it shouldn't be, because this is kind of a big one, but we have been, since my tenure as superintendent, one of the things that Mr. Goslin and I have been very cognizant of doing, and this was a lot of work that we did with Sean Cronin, who was one of the state overseers in the early, my early tenure, is to build the circuit breaker carry forward so that you don't spend it all, you build it so that when you do have those 100 students that you don't project and don't know they're moving in, you actually have funds to help alleviate those costs. And we have been so fortunate to be able to do that and have worked very hard to be able to do that. We are coming to a point where we don't have the same level of funds in circuit breaker to keep carrying forward. So if you recall, last year and, and Member DeZoglio and Member Keegan should recall in years previous, we've been able to offset the next year's budget by using circuit breaker to prepay tuitions and do some of those things. And we're just not going to have that level of funding where it's going to make that kind of a dent in the next year's budget. And this is where, to put in perspective, a lot of my colleagues, right? So some of the things that we have been seeing, right, they haven't had the, that fund, that carry forward fund to be able to offset like we have. And so you've seen budget deficits and, and terrible stories about school funding over the past several years and a lot of it is due to that. There's just not that carry forward that folks have. So I do want to say that out loud because that is really critical to what we're doing here, that we're just not going to have that amount of money to just take off the top of FY 26 like we have had in the past to help offset that cost. And we've had that for the past six years I've been superintendent, which again, very fortunate, right? So worth saying and important to note. So the next three slides are the actual money. So the first one is transportation, so this is non-net. I put a little tag there so you can, because I just, I heard somebody was going to ask me about crossing guards. It's wrong, what? Mr. Goslin?
There's a typo there, that's not crossing guards, that is, should the transportation coordinator be put back in the budget?
Oh, that was so close.
That's why it's under transportation. I will tell you cross, I will tell you crossing guards is $120,000 and that is level funded. It's not on this chart, but it is 120,000.
That makes me sad, now I want to just skip the slide altogether.
Sorry.
That's okay. I will change that and repost it, my little red arrow. But anyway, so the, the increase that you see, that final column in, in non-net transportation is 2.58. That is, again, I don't think unexpected, that is something that we have been talking about, we knew that the transportation contract came in over from last year, it was one of two bids and it was the lowest bid. The next large pool of money is contracted service. I believe I got this one right, though my little note on the side, I think is absolutely correct, right, Ms. Bozak?
Yeah.
Okay. So the contracted services is up $9 million from previous FY 25. And so you can see there, I just wanted to point out in the line where the 2.4 million is housed, so you can see where that lives. The rest of this is some special education tuitions. So you can see just the difference in 26 out of district tuitions versus 25 is 3.6 million for the current kids that we have projected for out of districts. And then there are some other contracted services by way of facilities, technology, Everybody gets very quiet now that we're looking at numbers. So the last page here is the summary of the budget, so kind of what Mr., Member Chabilla just alluded to, I've put a couple of scenarios on here, but you'll see FY 25 to 26 and the difference in the last, the far-right column, those are the differences between what we're seeing year to year. And on the bottom in the blue is the difference between the adding up of the sum of those columns. And then what I also did is in green on the bottom, that's what it would look like if indeed we got the federal entitlement grants that are 3.15 million of salaries, right? So it would take professional salaries right off the top of that. That's where it would come from, is professional salaries. I hope that makes sense. And, and again, the other. And, and again, the other piece that this just puts it all together, kind of circling back to Member Keegan's question in the beginning, we've added up all the pieces of why special education has gone up so much, you know, going through this process. But just again, also perspective, 53.2 million of the budget that we are presenting to you tonight is special education. That doesn't mean out of district, and that's all of it. In district, out of district, transportation, related services, everything, 53.2 million, 42% of the budget that is presented. And this is where I say, I made my friends in Woburn, that they're dealing with something very similar in the fact that those numbers are large and a large percentage of their overall budget. Not quite as big as ours because we are a large district, but just something to point out all the conversation we had about special education and where we land with it. Yeah.
Can you, real quick, on this chart that was free-floating in our binder, can you speak to the required district contribution line?
Mr. Goslin might be able to.
And-
I think I just wrote all over mine.
Yeah, I've, I've done a lot of math on mine, too. I should have brought a calculator.
What are you specifically looking at, Member Shabilia?
So it's the required district contribution line.
Yeah, the 49 million.
Forty-nine million. And I, I won't, I won't say the number out loud, but I did the math between the wish list here and the Chapter 70 to see what we would like to see from the city. But what, what is, I guess if you could just, just speak to that line because I want people to understand what that is.
Forty-nine million dollars is required contribution from the city towards net school spending. Transportation, non-net, would be on top of that. Okay? So what is it? Fifty, what's the percentage? Oh, they don't have a broken dollar. Yeah, 53%.
53%.
53% comes from, actually, 53%. Sorry. 58% comes from Chapter 70 for net school spending. That, just on the foundation. The state sets a bare minimum that all school departments must spend on net school spending. And they tell you what that bare minimum is, and you're not supposed to go under it. The vast majority of schools are way over that, that minimum spending. And that 49 million dollars would get, get them to foundation or the bare minimum.
So by my math, there's about a $7 million swing from what this budget requests, from what the state puts at our minimum.
There's-
And just non-net.
Not really. I mean, it's, it's just a little more complicated because again, what you're looking at here is required net school spending.
Right.
What we've put here is net and non-net.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
So when it's presented to the school committee, it's one whole number, I believe. I mean, the city council-
We talk about operational budget. So what we spend on transportation, education, facilities, that's operational. There's another piece with the municipal chargebacks that we report to the state that the city spends on behalf of the school department, school resource officers, insurance is the big one. So that's an additional $20 million that goes towards that net school spending.
Right.
So if you, if you wanted a total number of net, non-net, and chargebacks, you're going to add 20 million to that? We haven't even had a conversation with the city about chargebacks. But it's not money that we typically see, it's just money that, that city, right, for the health insurance.
That's been a standing arrangement for-
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty standard. It, not expecting any huge jumps or anything unless insurance goes through the roof.
We know to expect it.
Thank you.
Silence. All right. So I'm going to have everybody jump in at this point. I know we're at 8:30, so I'm going to keep track of the time. When we hit nine o'clock, we'll stop and pause and make sure we vote to continue past nine o'clock. But I'll have Ms. Bozak just kind of quickly identify the changes at the Early Childhood Center, and then the five principals will come on up.
So at the Early Childhood Center, we are looking at reducing one integrated preschool, special education teacher, and one program assistant. The needs of the students that are coming into our preschool are more of the intensive needs, and we're not seeing the enrollment projected for the integrated preschool classroom. You will also see reduction of two pathways program assistants. These are the two kindergarten classrooms currently located at Branch that will be moving to the Marsh next school year. And Dr. Kwong had mentioned earlier that we are reducing the program assistant support in those classrooms by one, so that's why there's a reduction of two. And then there is a request, as mentioned earlier as well, for an evaluation team facilitator to support the work of the special ed administrator at Branch Street.
Questions?
This will be a standing question throughout, I guess, all of the conversation, but I'd be curious to know how many of the positions that are being removed are vacant versus how many are filled?
The program assistant ones are vacant.
Well, but just as a standing question as we go through.
Yeah. We can definitely do that.
I guess this is less of a question than more of a statement, that by eliminating an integrated preschool means we're also eliminating tuitions coming in to pay for that classroom also, correct? Because we don't have any paying students in that, in those rooms that we're replacing this room with.
Correct.
So we're losing money coming in-
Revolving, yes.
As well as, okay. Just wanted to make sure that I'm not crazy, that that's what we're doing.
Not, but also our preschool PR models have been down.
Okay.
It's not, we're not losing the full capacity at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So I'd like to call up Mr. Corrett, just to go through, if you guys turn to your Methuen High School tab, at least you can see the narrative while he's going through the positions. Mr. Corrett, you first.
Good evening. Thanks for having me up here. So I'll go through the high schools' proposals. So I'll start with special education. The, the first I'll talk about is the addition of a pathways program assistant. So essentially, our ASD pathways program is set to significantly increase in enrollment next year with our projected students that are going to be coming up to the high school, essentially doubling the enrollment. So we are proposing that we're to add a, a program assistant for the ASD pathways program. And that's not something that, you know, we feel like needs anything more than that considering our current numbers, but with the, with the program growing pretty significantly, we could definitely use the additional support of a program assistant. We are looking to add a one-to-one program assistant, and that's, that's really grounded in the, the student's specialized plan that, that calls for a one-to-one program assistant that we currently do not have in our budget allocated. We're looking to add a speech therapist. So students' speech and language needs have increased at the high school in the past couple of years with more students requiring direct services. And it is a position that would be shared with other buildings with regards to students in other buildings needing speech services as well. We're looking to reduce one of our educational captionists as that student is graduating and will no longer need that position required. Moving on to our ELE program. So as of June 3 of last year, we had 276 ELs. By October 1 of this school year, we were, we moved up to 300 ELs. And as of February 25 of the school year, we're up to 322 ELs. So we are proposing the addition of one English learner teaching position. That will allow the department to provide the recommended service minutes to foundational learners. And then additionally, with the changes to graduation competency determination, that staff member would also be able to co-teach and, and support freshman and sophomore English classes and algebra and geometry classes, which are, are going to be requirements for graduation and median competency determination for our EL learners. Moving on to CTE. So, you know, as you guys are, I'm sure, very much well aware of, we're looking to secure Chapter 74 designation by securing the designation that, that would significantly increase funding to the school. And with that, there are a couple of requirements that we need to meet to secure that Chap- Chapter 74 designation, one of them being that we do have to offer an exploratory course, and then we also have to have a director or supervisor of that department. So currently, our marketing and accounting classes are very popular. And with the addition of exploratory, it's going to result in those teachers not being able to teach as many classes. And then the same thing with our early education and care section, very high demand in terms of students wanting to take those classes. But with the addition of exploratory, we won't be able to offer as many sections, so that's why we're making that request there. And then again, our director of CTE is a requirement of the Chapter 74 designation, and additionally, some of their other responsibilities outside of obviously supervising and supporting the department would be to oversee and run the internship, externship programming. And then a few additional staff that we're proposing. We're proposing adding one building-based educator. You know, these positions typically support us when, when staff are out on sick days, personal days, and/or have to attend IEP or 504 meetings. When we, you know, pass a certain threshold with regards to staff being out of the building or in meetings, we do have to relocate large groups of students to areas like the media center, the auditorium, and/or the cafeteria, which makes learning in those moments pretty challenging. So we're hoping to add a BBE to our staff. We currently have 12 BBEs. Some of the grammar schools, you know, are right around our number in terms of BBEs, but we, we service between 600, 800 more students and have additionally between 50 and 70 additional staff in the high school building. We're also looking to add a building monitor. So obviously, it's a priority of ours to make sure that our building is safe and secure. Our building monitors work very hard. We have three currently. We're looking to add another one to, to make sure our students are where they're supposed to be, our, our building is safe and secure, checking exterior doors, supervising the hallways, making sure that we're good and safe. But it is a very big building, there's a lot going on here, and an addition of a building monitor would really help us out with making sure the building is, is where we want it to be with regards to security and safety, and it would also allow our administrators to do some intensive work with supporting students and programming. We're, we're looking to add a nursing staff member. This is really more of like a shift. There, there's a student coming to us next year that does require a one-to-one nurse per their specialized plan, and that, that student currently gets those services at the grammar school, so that's more of a shift from that, of that, that position over to the high school. We're looking to fully fund the supervisor of physical, physical education, health, and wellness. That's a position that was folded last year when there was a resignation. There was a side letter with, with Unit B that it, that it was, that it was hopefully to be brought back this year. That staff member doesn't just support and, and supervise the health, wellness, PE staff at the high school, but they, they do it for the entire district, and they are in charge of, of, of over 30 staff members. Additionally, the, the, there's an overhaul with the curriculum, ensuring that the, the curriculum being taught is aligned to the comprehensive health standards. So right now, we don't have any oversight or supervision of that, and it's left on the building principals to do that work. And then on here additionally, we have the, the addition of one program assistant for Little Rangers. So our Little Rangers daycare program is currently housed in Methuen High School. They're not, they're not officially affiliated with us. They currently have two teachers and two PAs, which I would say is them operating at capacity. And then if there's a teacher and/or a PA out, that puts a, a pretty big burden on the program to make, and, and they are understaffed, and we don't really have the resources at the high school to provide support. We do, we make it work, but the addition of a program assistant for Little Rangers would, would significantly help us with that. And then the two positions that we are proposing to remove are, one I mentioned, and then the other one was math position that's currently unfilled, that, that's in our budget as, as a position that supports supplemental classes, which we just weren't able to fill it this year, and we were able to make it work, so we're proposing removing that.
Any questions for Mr. Corrett, vice chair?
Two questions. In future meetings, can you highlight which ones are legally obligated and like point out like, we don't really have a choice, we have to fund this, as opposed to this is something that if we don't fund it, we're not looking at a legal implication? That's number one. And number two, is the program assistant for the Little Rangers paid for by the tuitions of the Little Rangers program, or is it going to be in our operating budget?
From the revolving account.
Okay.
Yep. It would come from the tuitions.
Tuitions.
All those tuitions have to be spent on that program, so, and it, it's healthy enough that it could, it could cover that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Boolette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do, do we have a sense with the additional CTE grant funding, how much Methuen could potentially receive? Because like-
No, but I just wrote it down that that is something I need to find for our next meeting.
Okay.
That how much we would receive more per student for an additional, the radio, the media production, and then if we added more teachers, they'd have a full complement of courses that would add enrollment numbers. So I will get that for you.
Okay.
And the exploratory broadcast. I will get you how much what we're presenting would increase our budget.
And then in terms of like enticement, again, I'm just spitballing, enticement to the vocational school or to outside Methuen potentially, what is our capacity for that CTE program? Could we get a number on that? Like if we expand it, if we make sure we can maybe entice students to maintain availability and to stay in Methuen schools versus going to another school system? Is that something too that we could project down the line to explore and study?
Sort of. So I'm, I'm, as a comprehensive high school, we're not allowed to open any, any CTE programs that our partner CTE school, high school has. They can, I cannot.
Even if they don't offer the, the services, like we-
I can offer a CTE pathway that they do not offer.
Okay.
We can have an agreement about that. But I can't, I cannot add like automated, I can't add a auto shop here.
Okay.
Or medical assisting. I can't go through that process when they offer it at their school.
And I know there was a-
That's my understanding. I could be wrong. I'll make sure that I'm not misspeaking, but I'm pretty sure that that is how that works.
And we had a neighboring, I think the Whittier is closing down certain CTE programs. Is, is that a possibility to explore? Again, I'm not necessarily in favor or something, but if it could be additional monies to our district to, to explore that option with the early childhood, because again, I want to, if you have a thriving program, kids will more likely stay with that program and stay in Methuen. And I think also it benefits us as a community, and we could obtain additional grant funding, something just, just to study down the line.
Yeah. And we don't, Whittier is not our partner school, so we don't send kids to Whittier.
Okay.
We might have a few that are tuitioned out, right, Mr. Goslin? But it's not our partner technical high school.
Okay.
So-
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Maxwell?
So two questions. Is the-
Is the, is the building monitor a security guard in a sense? Is that what we're?
I guess, in a sense, we use building monitor. But, I mean, schools have similar positions that do similar roles. We just prefer.
On top of the SRO?
Yeah, no, they're not, they're not security officers like you're thinking at all. They're Mathoin Public School staff. And they basically are, there's tiered times that they arrive and leave the school, so the school's always covered. They work with the principal to actually make sure the hallways, bathrooms, under stairwells, places where we might not see things with cameras, that kind of stuff. Kids are getting to class and not in places where they shouldn't be. So, they, and they're monitoring the doors as well. So, I mean, this is, the footprint here is massive. So, we have three building monitors right now at the high school. Mr. Coret is requesting one more.
You have three building monitors, and how many students at the high school?
Just under 2,000. I think we're at 1,900 now.
Do we have any building monitors at the elementary schools?
No.
Okay. And as far as the supplemental position that you said that you were asking for but couldn't get filled, is there still a need for that position, and we're just getting rid of it?
We were able to fold and combine classes and still keep our class sizes in a position that we're comfortable with.
So, that position isn't needed anymore?
Yeah, at the time, I would say, yeah, it's not needed.
Any other questions regarding the high school?
If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Coret.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coret. Mr. Hill, you're up. So, the Tenny Grammar School is next.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity. One on eight, I'll dive right in, starting first in terms of gen ed classrooms, looking at enrollment there and obviously anticipating keeping class sizes within the range that we have worked on for so long. Addition of a grade K teacher resulting in projected class size of 17 students, trying to keep that as low as we can. A reduction of one grade two teacher resulting in projected class size of 21. Addition of one grade three teacher resulting in projected class size of 20 students. Reduction in one grade four teacher resulting in the projected class size of 21. And then, the addition of a grade one, or a grade eight teacher, which would result in a projected class size of 22. So, obviously, trying to maintain those projected class, or maintain target class sizes within K through eight.
Can I just clarify something? So, in the grammar school narratives, so I think if you're on the Tenny, you're looking right above that. Each grammar school, this was something we did not add last year, and I think it's helpful to have it in your narrative, the chart above that gives the projected class sizes with what is presented here. So, you can see that. So, if you, you know, you start deleting, you can just add five to like, each one of those numbers every time we have to reduce a teacher. It just gives you a good perspective on what we're talking about. So, I apologize for that. But each of the grammar schools will have that chart above their narratives. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Hill.
Thank you. We've talked a lot about in terms of increase with special ed programming. Increase is one thing, but also looking at the specialized needs of students that we're servicing. So, in that regard, the addition of three program assistants to specifically with students who require the one-to-one support. Addition of one occupational therapist, given the increased needs for students in our substantially separate program, which continues to expand. And then, the addition of an evaluation team facilitator to support our special ed administrator. I cannot emphasize that position enough in terms of the increased responsibility on our, currently just our SEA, in having a full-time evaluation team facilitator to support that individual is critical. Especially to building the size of the Tenny with the number of increasing needs of students with specialized needs. Health services, we are anticipating a specific student needing a one-to-one full-time nurse to be with that student. The RBT support, we've looked at trying to fill those positions, but were unable, and thus made the decision to reduce in terms of the two RBT support staff. We do have a full-time BCBA who does an amazing job supporting classroom teachers and students. ELA services, we've talked a lot about, just in terms of the overall projection and increase of ELA. We're right behind the high school in terms of enrollment of, and identification of ELA students. And thus, would request to have an additional EL teacher to meet the specific educational needs of our EL students. We've talked a lot about in terms of custodial staff. The Tenny on any given night is a very busy place with two gyms, cafeteria, auditorium, multiple events happening at any one time. Currently, our custodians largely take that responsibility in terms of whether it's opening doors, letting people in and out. That is, pulls them away from cleaning the building, which is their primary responsibility. So, we are recommending the addition of one night shift custodian. We've talked about the STEM supervision. Once again, I cannot, in terms of role there, overseeing particularly science and math in a building K through eight with a number of teachers. And it's not just teachers, but also assisting program assistants and anybody else involved with curricular program delivery. Really important position. Media center, we, there was, we've obviously had discussion regarding the importance of that position, given the work that we've done so far in creating such a viable library space for our students. And then, lastly, the addition of one bilingual secretary. I continue to this day in a building that's almost 1,300 students. I'm amazed. I don't quite know how our two full-time secretaries pull off what they do in terms of number of students, communication. We are fortunate to have an amazing parent liaison who assists as well in terms of communication and interpreting, translating, and helping out in the office. But it's a huge responsibility on our two full-time secretaries. So, the addition of adding one would be, would be extremely helpful. And I believe that is the extent of our proposed recommendations for the Tenny.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Member Maxwell.
Where it says the addition of the evaluation team facilitator, aren't we asking for a district facilitator for evaluations?
No, and I apologize if that was confusing. I was talking about that position, that you would see that request in all of the schools.
Okay, so it's not one specific?
Correct.
It's one per school?
You got it. And I apologize, because I realized when he was talking, that might have been confusing. But yes, so that was, I explained some of it, Mr. Hill explained some of it, some of the folks might add, but you'll see that request in each school.
Okay. And as far as the reduction of two RBTs, what is an RBT? And is the reduction of two RBTs the equivalent of hiring the full-time BCBA?
So, the RBT is a registered behavior technician, and they typically don't get paid as much as a BCBA.
But can the BCBA do what the RBT does?
Yes, so the BCBA supervises RBTs. So, the RBTs, we were hoping to be supportive in going into classrooms, helping teachers be there for the students. But we have not been able to fill those positions, meaning like, nobody's applying for those.
So, we filled it with one full-time better?
No. So, we've had the BCBA permanently for several years. That has been part of a, you know, a heightened requirement. We have that person who does functional behavioral assessments for evaluations, supports the staff and students at the Tenny. You'll see that in all the buildings. What we're seeing is just, we expanded that last year, thinking the RBTs would be a support for the BCBA. And we just, we haven't been able to fill those positions.
But there is still a need for it?
I would say there's still a need for it.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Just had to make some decisions. Yep. Mr. Hill, would you disagree with me?
I would not.
Okay.
Just to go over like, reduction and addition of teachers, like, there's a possibility that the reduction of the second grade teacher will be possibly moving up to third grade?
You're right. So, that's, so every principal that does the addition and reductions are looking at current staff and where they could potentially go based on certification.
Perfect. That's just for the public, because I know last year when we did that, parents would be like, oh my God, we're losing teachers. And it's like, no, we're just moving them.
Yeah, at this point, I think we're talking about shifting people.
Yeah.
At this point.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to Mr. Reeve in the Timony, I want to, I need a motion and a second to extend past nine o'clock.
Second.
Second.
Motion for Member Le, the second is from Member Vice Chair Keegan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we're going past nine. All right, here we go. Brace yourself.
Good evening. Yeah, I think mine's going to be a little bit quicker. I mean, Mr. Hill was up here, and other people were talking about some of the common positions we're going to have in each of the buildings. So, just in looking at general ed teachers, we too are going to be asking for a kindergarten teacher to keep our numbers down below that 20 student mark. We are looking to reduce a second grade teacher, but that goes to just a shift. It's not really losing the teachers, that shift that we were talking about before. Similarly, in the sixth grade and the seventh grade, we're looking to reduce a teacher in the sixth grade. But that's with our bigger bubble of kids, so that teacher will travel up to the seventh grade, which is why we're asking for another seventh grade teacher. Eighth grade's a little bit different. Last year's budget, we reduced our, we normally carry six teachers per team. Our numbers dictated that we could drop down to five. With this class coming up, we need to at least replace that to bring us back to six. But that puts us right at 25, starting the year with 25. So, we're asking for an additional eighth grade teacher to at least start the year with under 25 students. So, that's the general education scene at the Timony. In special education, we are looking to reduce the Choices sub-separate position that we had, just in talking with Assistant Superintendent Bozak and across the district, our building programming and district programming, there's just not a need for that program anymore. So, we're going to reduce that position. We are, however, going to ask to ask for a lower school resource room teacher. So, again, that potentially could be another shift. The sub-separate position actually was, it was unfilled all year. We were unable to find somebody for that position. So, we are going to see if we can shift that over to our lower school resource room. We were anticipating 13 students with IEPs coming up from pre-K. And currently, right now, our special education reading specialist and our first grade special education resource room teacher sort of split all of those things and just with the amount of services and complexity of services that our special education reading specialist deals with on a daily basis. That's the reason for the ask there. Again, due to an increase, we were projected to get 17 students in the Pathways Program next year. So, we're requesting four program assistants to cover those services for those students. That particular program is one that's grown, grown a lot over the past year and a half. So, the four, the four program assistants would be great to have. That program's now over 60 students in our building. We do have two one-on-one program assistants that we're asking for. Those are for both medical and special education needs for those particular two students. I'll skip the evaluation team facilitator, though we would really, 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 that would be super helpful, again, to get at that programmatic piece. As you know, the Timony's got two programs. We have, we have a component of the Pathways Program, we have the Choices Program. You know, that level of oversight that an ETF would allow the SEA to have over those programs, I think, would be something that's been missing for years. So, I'm excited at the possibility of maybe securing those positions for the district. The BCBA, that was one that we held in the budget. We did not fill it after somebody left. So, I am asking that that BCBA be added again this year. It's for our general education students. The one BCBA that we do have at the Timony is for our Choices students. It's for our Choices program only, though she does help out here and there. It's supposed to be dedicated to our Choices students, which are about 30 students, 34 students. So, we have all of the others at the Timony that could use that BCBA support. You know, the night shift custodian, we've talked about, definitely the Timony's the biggest square footage of the Grammer's, 225,000 square feet. That was told to me by Bruce Stella, so I'm sure that's accurate. And our building, like the Tenny, and it's used every night. And several, and a lot, all of the spaces are used consistently. So, having that support would be great. And I think, yeah, I'm going to go with that one. I have that one last. Everything else, I think, down to the health office, that's a reduction only because it's a one-on-one nurse for a student with a medical need, and that student will be going to the high school. So, that's the reason for that reduction there. Everything else is pretty much consistent with what the other grammar schools are asking for.
Any questions for Mr. Reeve, Member Shabilia?
The BCBA, if, will Constellations be in your school as well? Just the Marsh, even though they have some of the, is it, is it different pros?
It's a different program, yeah. So. There's, I know this gets really confusing too, but there's a Pathways Program in every school. It's a, it's a partial, like, it's a resource room pathways. So, the students are included into regular education, but need that support and have the identification?
Yeah, their students identified with autism.
Autism, yeah.
And they are accessing grade level or near-grade level curriculum content. They're in, primarily in the general education classroom, require additional support to navigate social situations, might need some small group support.
And that's different from the autism program at the Marsh?
Which is sub-separate.
Sub-separate.
So, our BCBA now, who works with Choices, supposed to work with Choices only, also works with the students in the Pathways Program. And she's got, she's, I think I had her do a list, and it's like 87 students that she's trying to work with. It's a lot, it's a lot for one person, especially when you look at some of those, the complexity of some of the needs that they have.
I would love to also clarify though, because it's, if you, if there's confusion, I just want to make sure there's not. So, there's a K-8 Pathways Program that Ms. Bozak just described in all four of the grammar schools. There's an additional Pathways Program that is sub-separate at the Marsh. That's the one we're talking about, Constellations.
It didn't, when we talked about Constellations, I didn't make the separation between the programs, and I thought all Constellations.
The titles, right.
All Pathways would get one. And I saw this and thought, oh, you're going to get a BCBA from?
No.
It's different.
He might wish that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reeve.
We have one.
Oh, wait, Mr. Reeve, we have questions. Sorry.
Do you have something too?
I'll have to hook you up.
We'll have Member Maxwell and then.
My apologies, yep.
So, with the reduction of the one-to-one school nurse, I'm assuming because they're going to the high school, is the one-to-one going to follow them to the high school since they need?
That was the one, I think, Mr. Coret started that one.
Mr. Coret did speak about that.
Did he?
Yes.
That it's a swap. Yeah, so you'll see the addition at the high school because the student is coming from the Timony. So, budget-wise, you're going to see that reduction and that addition. We're just, we're trying to make sure.
So, if we have reductions in one school that potentially the other school may need, they will just get a transfer to another school? Is that what we're hoping?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the addition of the one bilingual secretary, didn't you just get a bilingual secretary?
I did, but that was, that was a lower school, that was the lower school secretary position that was open. The candidate happened to be bilingual.
Ah, I got you.
Yeah, so.
That's all, thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome. Anybody else for Mr. Reeve?
It's not specifically for Mr. Reeve, but I've noticed it at the Tenny also. But this summary does not match this in all of the positions, so there's some missing on this page.
Okay.
So, I just want to let you know that this is not complete.
I already have to edit it and repost it.
It's mine.
So, I will make sure that I.
Were there things that I didn't hit on that were on there?
It's mine, I did it. I'm the one.
I'm going off my narrative.
Yeah.
The narrative is the complete.
The narrative is complete, but I noticed on the Tenny, there was a missing position on here, and I was like, wait a minute, what's that? And then, I saw it again now.
Stick with the narrative for right now? Yep, I put the slides up there just so the folks behind us and in the public could have something to look at, and so I apologize for that. I will certainly correct.
No worries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeve.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Gordon. Hey, my turn.
Hey, my turn. Alright, so we'll start with gen ed at the Marsh. Due to our declining enrollment, we will need to reduce a grade one, a grade three, and a grade eight teacher. That still maintains the target class size. For support services, we are looking to add a risk coordinator, so a little bit of data for you. From this past September to January, in upper school, there were one-hundred-and-fifteen office behavioral incidents, which fifty-eight students were involved. Twenty-one of those students were repeat offenders, meaning they were involved in more than one of those incidences. In lower school, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-four office referrals, office incidences, eighty-one students involved, and thirty-seven of those students had multiple incidences. So, we are looking for a risk coordinator to support appropriate in-school consequences and provide additional, more targeted support. So, with the goal to try to keep those kids in school. Under special education, we are looking to move from the program, the two classrooms at Branch Street to Marsh. So, that would be two special education teachers as part of the Pathways sub-separate program, four program assistants, and one occupational therapist coming to the Marsh. And we are also looking to add, due to numbers, one special education teacher, two program assistants, and one speech and language pathologist. And then, as Ms. Bozak said about the Constellations and alternative Pathways programs, based on the structure, we would be able to eliminate twelve program assistant positions. We would, we are looking to reduce a Coda, which is a OT therapy assistant. And we are looking to reduce one resource room teacher and add, in place of two program assistants, so that we could support students in the general education classroom. And then, like everybody else, requesting a STEM supervisor, media specialist, and bilingual secretary.
Any questions for Ms. Gordon, Vice Chair?
I just wanna make sure the math is right on this. If you're bringing two classrooms from Branch Street to the Marsh, how are you reducing twelve program assistants? Wouldn't it only be ten?
So, the current classrooms that are there in K-four at the Marsh, plus bringing over the two. We're, for a total of twelve classrooms, we're reducing one program assistant from each classroom.
But we're only gonna be reducing ten from the Marsh budget, 'cause the other two are over at Branch Street right now.
We have to, we're moving them to the Marsh, so you see them in the Marsh.
And then reducing.
Are we saying different things?
Alright. This, this year, I see those two program assistants at Branch Street, not at the Marsh.
FY twenty-five, correct.
Okay, so then, when I look at the Marsh, when I look at the Marsh budget this year, it doesn't include those two program assistants from Branch Street. So, you're not actually reducing them from the Marsh budget, you're reducing them from the Branch Street current budget. So, Marsh itself is only actually reducing ten positions, not twelve, 'cause the other two are currently in the budget at Branch Street.
We will examine that.
Okay.
'Cause it's nine-ten, and I think I get you, but like, I have to look at different things than just this, 'cause I totally understand what you're saying. We'll make sure that everything is in the right place.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause I just don't think the twelve positions are coming out of the Marsh. I think ten positions are coming out of the Marsh, and two positions are coming out of the, out of Branch. It still adds up to twelve, it's just that in the budget, they're in different places. Got it.
Member Shabilia?
So, my, my question was in the same vein, and goes back to what I asked you earlier. If we had the five preschools with the five, the five kindergartens, which you have five full kindergarten classes right now, and we have the extra two, I guess I'm concerned as to how we're reducing a grade one teacher when we're bringing up two extra kindergarten classes to the Marsh.
So, the general ed? Yeah, so, so we're looking at?
It'll be full sub-separate, so it's not?
Yeah, so if you look at the, the projected class size chart for the Marsh, it's set up a little differently. The Marsh, the CGS are set up a little differently for their different programming. So, when you look in the middle, total enrollment minus the Pathways kids, because those students are not gonna be in the mainstream classrooms on any given day, full-time.
Okay.
Or if at all, likely, right? So, we're looking at class sizes reduced by that many kids in those grades. That's the class size you're gonna see in a regular classroom. Or specialist classroom, because like Ms. Bozak said, right now, we don't have adapted, adapted specialists for that program. They're, they are going as much as they possibly can to the specialist classrooms when grade one has class, et cetera. It, you know, sometimes it works, and sometimes it's not super successful. So, they'll have, when we talk about alternative program, we're, we're really gonna create a situation where they're gonna have their own specialist schedule, their own programming, their own schedule between eight and three.
Okay. And my last question, and probably more for you. With the addition of a RIS coordinator at the Marsh, does that now give us the RIS, a RIS equivalent position at each school to do the, what essentially amounts to the in-school suspension versus an out-of-school suspension?
Yes, because I believe Ms. Proetti will be asking for that as well.
Saw that.
Okay. But yes, I think both have made the case with the numbers of students they're seeing, and seeing how well it's working at the other two schools. There's that flip to, and I've heard that loud and clear too, from many school committee members about offering, having that opportunity at all four of the grammar schools for that timeout, in-school suspension, half-day, when you, we don't need to send kids out of the building.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Ms. Gordon?
Yeah, just a quick question. I noticed that, and just because they're back-to-back, I mean, the Marsh Grammar School has two-hundred-and-twenty-seven students with disabilities. And the Timony has two-hundred-and-sixty-eight students with disabilities. So, I guess I'm confused on why we have so many specialists at the Marsh and not more at the Timony.
It really comes down to that specialized program. The Pathways program at the Marsh is an intense, that's a program that you would see in an out-of-district school, that we're housing in district. That is what we're talking about.
But these numbers include those Pathway students.
Yes.
So, these numbers at the Timony do not include those Pathway students.
Different programs.
Different programs.
No, I understand. I, I know that they're different programs, but there are more students at the Timony with disabilities, but more specialists at the Marsh?
Correct.
There are a hundred, and next year, there will be a hundred-and-nine students at the Marsh for the Pathways sub-separate program.
Only.
Only.
So, you're talking about an out-of-district program with intense services for a hundred-and-nine students at the Marsh. With related service needs, with behavior needs, with social needs.
So, the Pathways program is a, is a social needs, what, what is the Pathways program again? Social, emotional, and?
Students with autism.
Autism, okay. Okay.
So, can I just help out a little bit? The kids at the Marsh are autism-specific, that need a program that does not integrate. They don't go into the gen ed classroom, whereas the numbers at the Timony, the kids with special needs, could be just a person who needs reading help. So, the, the intensity of the kids at the Marsh require all of those other specialists, whereas the kids at the Timony don't have necessarily the intensive needs that the kids at the Marsh have.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Gordon? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Proetti?
Here I am.
Round this out for us.
Do we need like deep breathing, a couple of jumping jacks? Like a little reset? No, I was usually first, I'm last this year, so lucky you. And some of my friends already spoke of some of my positions, so, like my colleagues, there are some adjustments in enrollment, just fluctuations, and we're responding to that. So, we have an additional kindergarten teacher, we're in need of an additional kindergarten teacher, which will bring us to five gen ed kindergarten teachers. We'll do a reduction of two gen ed teachers based on enrollment, so that would be grade one and grade eight. That's, that's really all we have for gen ed at this moment, based on enrollment. My positions are really, they speak to the conversation we've had tonight about the changing profile of our students. So, largely, a lot of my positions are about special education and English language learners. So, the first position for L is I need two additional ESL teachers. So, the current numbers at the CGS, I'll say current, last time I looked, was a hundred-and-seventy-six ESL students. And it's important to differentiate the ESL students from the newcomer students. So, newcomer students are those that this may be their first US school experience, they're in the Excel newcomer program. The students that have ESL services have acquired enough English to go into the general education classrooms, but need support within the general education setting. So, then we look at the general education setting, what supports can we give them so that they are still successful in the gen ed, in the gen ed setting? Those two ESL teachers, excuse me, sorry, will help support really that general education kind of inclusive setting, so that kids are integrated into the mainstream, and they have that really successful educational experience. Like my colleagues, we are getting some additional Pathway students to our, our Pathways inclusion program. So, we require a PA for that. We think that we can do it with a program assistant. We also need the addition of a one-to-one program assistant, assistant for a student that has some substantial medical needs. The, I'll skip the ETF for now. And then, the night shift custodian, I think Dr. Kwong and the team has really speak, spoken at length about that. We did have to reduce that position last year, we're just looking to be whole with that. The other positions are similar to my colleagues, so we will, we're asking for the ETF. And I really look at that position in giving an opportunity for the SEA to do some programmatic review. We haven't had that opportunity to have anybody really go into the resource rooms and kind of do some of that, like, are we using high-quality materials? What do we need differently? Right? We haven't done that for a while, so I know we're all looking forward to that. In addition to that, the STEM supervisor would really complete, like Lisa said, the full complement of having supervisors and really content and curriculum specialists to, again, review our high-quality materials. The media center specialist, we're all very committed to that, you know, goal of having these beautiful libraries and have kids have books in their hands and really feel that empowerment of getting a book that they can read, so we're looking forward to that. And I, the bilingual secretary, I, I can't speak to this enough. The CGS has three-hundred-and-fifty-four Ls out of a thousand students. And, and all it takes is one person to be on the phone, and another person to be talking for a parent, to someone call me, for a parent to call me and say, no one's answering the phone. It is, it's a challenge. Our goal is certainly wonderful, you know, we have this wonderful goal of parent engagement. It's really hard when their first phone call goes unanswered. So, so really, I, I think if we're gonna have that goal, we really have to put, you know, the force behind it to really make sure that we're answering and responding to parents, and I think that the bilingual secretary will help us do that. The last two things will be a reduction in a resource room teacher and a reduction in two program assistants for the Choices program. Again, to the comment, or to the conversation about the changing profile of our students, we see a reduction in the Choices program at the CGS. So, we no longer need those two Choices PAs. And the last thing, the risk coordinator, I too, Principal Gordon and I looked at numbers similarly. Of twenty-six repeat offender students in middle school, collectively, they have already till January missed a hundred-and-eighty days of school. That's a lot of school. So, our risk coordinator would then provide them the opportunity to have in-school suspension, because now, when you're absent that much, we're missing, we have engagement issues, we have content issues, and we're chasing our tail. So, really, what we'd like to do is have those in-school opportunities, so students, if they have a disability, are getting their special education need. If they're chronically absent, we're now tackling that, in addition to building responsible, responsible students who are respectful, but also building some skill gaps. So, we see the risk coordinator being a very influential and important position for us.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Proetti, Member Maxwell?
Just a quick question. With the hundred-and-eighty days that you used collectively, bringing in that risk coordinator would help with in, in-school suspension. Are we keeping those kids back? Because, I mean, how can they be at grade level or, you know, accessing everything that their peers are accessing if they are missing so many days of school and we're trying to play catch-up?
I, I think that speaks to the point, right? So, some of them, I mean, twenty-six students, if they all miss ten days, we'd be at two-hundred-and-sixty. We're not, right? So, it's a student-by-student issue, but to your point, we need to build skill gaps. We need to build those social relationships. By having them out of school and not attending and not doing work, every year, they're getting further and further behind. Even if you miss ten days, we're not talking about staying back, but you've still lost ten days of instruction.
And they're not being held back, correct?
Not, for ten days, no. We are having conversations.
Not ten days, I just mean the kids that are actively, like, you know, those twenty-six kids, for instance, who are missing school, and it's collectively a hundred-and-eighty days. There's obviously a significant impact on their education. We're not holding them back, so we're just passing them along.
No, I, I mean, I, I think those, they're all individual situations. If a student has missed and they're chronically absent, which would be a hundred-and-eighteen out of a hundred-and-eighty days, we're certainly having, having conversations and holding the policies in the handbook. We're doing those things, but I wouldn't say that for every student in that situation.
Okay.
It, it's certainly student-based, so some students, if there's a student in that collective data point that has thirty-four days of absence, we've already talked, we're already talking about that. But I can't say that for every student.
That wasn't a specific to you question. I just, you were the best person to answer it, you were the last one, so, you know, it wasn't specific to you. I just had that question.
No, it's a good question.
I know that we're not holding kids back, and I'm like, well, how are they progressing?
I think the important thing about retention, though, is we have to do something different.
Yeah.
Right? So, just pressing the reset button and not building those skill gaps and not looking at what interventions we're going to do and doing something different. I think the collective philosophy is if you're not going to do something different and you're gonna retain that student, what are you really doing?
Right.
Right? So, I know that our whole team subscribes to that, that it would have to be something significantly different. I think the goal is that we're trying to reduce and trying to be preventative. And I see that risk coordinator position as looking as a preventative, not reactionary, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Dan's writing a lot over there.
Thank you, Ms. Proetti.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I would just like, I don't have a slide for it, because I talked about most of them in the first part of the presentation, but if you turn to the central office tab, there are three positions in there that are district-wide, that were not part of any other discussion, I just wanna point out. On page two of that, you'll see that we, again, are asking for an additional secretary for the special education office. That has been deferred since two-thousand-and-nineteen, has never made it into the final budget with committee, so we're looking for that again, and even more so now with the increases in responsibilities with transportation and homeless transportation to boot. It is a pretty massive undertaking. And then, we're also asking, if you recall, last year, we did not fully fund the Director of Health Services. We left it in as a partial of that person's salary, and we are paying out some stipends. Ms. Bozak and I went back and forth about this one. We feel very strongly about it, partly because there's nobody in the district that, that can fill this, right? I don't have a nursing background, Ms. Bozak doesn't, we don't have nursing backgrounds that we can do this work to evaluate our ends, evaluate a medical situation. So, we are asking to actually bring that back, full funding. And then, we will be reducing a family engagement specialist. It's a grant-funded position, not a full, not a forty-hour-a-week position. We just feel at this point that with the grant restraints, we won't even have enough to carry on the contractual obligations for some of the positions we have in the grants. And that was a district-wide. The rest in this narrative have been described or discussed in other slides previous, but they're all here outlined again with the facilities and maintenance, operations, and finance office.
Member Donovan?
I know, we're running out of time. The reduction, web and tech support, that's the retirement?
Yes, there's a retirement in that department, and we're looking to replace that retirement, basically, with the two techs.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we just spent three and a half hours, which is critical, because I think that all of you have different feelings right now and, and thoughts and reflections about every- and thoughts and reflections about everything you just heard. And again, I don't want to walk into this, and I know a member will let you kind of started this, but like, we have to be real a little bit. But there's, there's a balance here. And I understand that I'm not here to bankrupt the city, nor are any of you. You know, I am being very forthright in our team presenting to you what we feel our schools need to be able to be effective, productive, move kids forward, support our student services, support our staff. But I also know that we are so far over in the change from last year. And now, although we don't have a target number at this point, you know, it's not likely to be the number we've presented to you. So, I'm not, you know, unrealistic thinking that, I would like to think that. However, I'm not. So, the only other thing we want to share with you tonight to give you some perspective and also line this piece up. So, with what we've presented tonight, we're at a plus 40 FTEs, right? So, we reduced some, we've added some, you subtract those out. And now, we're at, we're asking what was just presented to you for the past three and a half hours is a plus 40. Right? That's what we've done. So, so what I want to show you, because this is just going to have us leave on this note of really thinking about what we want to do. Because, again, what we do is going to be our collective value statement about what's important to us. And so, what I'm going to show you next doesn't mean it's not important, but I'm, this is the real part of what I'm trying to present. So, so I just want to show you what it looks like if we were at net zero. Right? So, so net zero, so meaning I've got to reduce now by 40 positions somewhere and have a dollar amount attached to that so you all can see what that dollar amount equals when we're talking about these positions. All right? You with me? Okay. So, and this, this was an activity that mostly a few people did and then was shared out with discussion. And I know that sounds odd, but these are often, you know, asking principals to prepare what they need and asking the directors to prepare what they need and then saying, by the way, tell me what you don't need, is really challenging. And I, the reaction from the principals, when we had this conversation on Friday, was exactly how it should have been, right? They were upset and, you know, distraught that they spent all this time on the work and that I'm going to be presenting something that is now net zero. I find value in what we just did because it is critical that the people of this community and the staff and the families and all of us understand that although I've heard the word wish list, I'm not sure that what we're asking for is a wish list. I think these are, many of these things, and I will absolutely do that, Member Keegan, are required. They are, they're not negotiable in the budget moving forward because they're required on students' IEPs or for service delivery. There are numerous, 29 of these new positions are in that category. Right? So, they're non-negotiable when it comes to what we need for service delivery. So, what we presented here is an opportunity to look at positions that are either new or vacant because with positions that have people in them comes different values that we have to then add for unemployment, right? That's a whole nother step of the process. So, to start this, I wanted to present this again so you guys could see a number of value attached to what 40 less our FTE look like. So, what's presented here, the positions in each one of these areas, mostly preserves class sizes or caseloads. There's a couple of positions that don't, mostly because they're retirements, again, non-people-filled positions. All right? We considered positions, new vacant retirement, 2.2 less in professional salaries, 374,000 in other salaries, and 336 in clerical. That's what these positions add up to. So, that's $2.9 million less than what you saw previous. So, what you're looking at is this chart, which is the same chart I did the first time, except I backed out the $2.9 million that you just saw on the previous slide. The blue line is what it is without the federal funding. And the green line at the bottom is what it is with the federal funding. So, with that, you can still see the difference. And it reads that the difference is still $16,657,000, right? So, so I did this because I, it's 9:30, there's a lot to process, and there's a lot of work to be done. And, and hard to know what that work is too until we have a target. And so, I think that, that we're going to continue to work with the mayor and the CAFO on the target. But I do think that we need to continue this conversation and gets, I've been writing down everything you guys just said, right? I see, I think the next thing, right, there are some asks of the committee that I think will, will help, that I want to be able to find and present, that could be part of our next discussion. Those, to me, I was hoping that we would at least walk out of here tonight with, with asks so that I could bring something back to this group and that we can continue the discussion and determine next steps. So, again, I think that is critically important to what we just did tonight.
So, first and foremost, I want to acknowledge the amount of effort and time that went into creating this, as it does every year, but this year being especially chaotic, troublesome, concerning, whatever, call it, put in there whatever you want to put in. And then, I also want to acknowledge the fact that what I'm about to say is going to give the mayor gray hair. And I know you and I had this conversation a couple of times.
I already have a little bit.
Well, I'm going to give you some more, bud. Give, you and I had this conversation a few times, sitting at the caucus table during negotiations. And I think courtesy of the narrative that I've heard from some counselors, not all, and the fact that the school committee approves, sends to the council what we want for a budget and they approve it, paints the picture that we're asking them for something and they're giving it to us, which makes us the bad guy and them the hero. I understand that this is not our final budget. You're right, not looking to bankrupt the city, and I don't think anybody in the district is. However, I will 100% be a no vote on any budget that goes to the council that hands them an easy give-me to say, we gave the school what they want, but leaves us in a position that doesn't advance the district. And that's going to cause a lot of grief for the mayor, and I apologize for that upfront. But the narrative that we've asked and they have given is so patently inaccurate and loaded with ambiguity, I can't support a budget that's going to do that. I don't know where that goes, but that's, that's where I'm going to be.
Just to go off of membership ability, last year, I voted no on the budget because I didn't think it would fit Methuen Public Schools. I plan on doing the same this year as well. As membership ability said, I could tell you one counselor, which is, has the same last name as me. I will call him out right now. He always says to us, you guys passed the budget, and we say yes. So, and I've already had conversations with the mayor already about it, that I'm going to vote no. And I've talked to Dr. Kwong, that it's, it's sometimes not, sometimes in this world, you don't need to be nice. And you put it on this council to vote no on our budget, and then we'll come back and we will do the cuts then, if we have to. But put it on them to make the no. I was going to vote no on the day of the budget. So, if we cut anything, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I come from a different perspective because I don't want to give a free pass to the governor because they're still in the midst of a House budget that's going to be forthcoming, a Senate budget, a conference committee, reconciliation, back to the governor. So, at this point, if you go and have a party that will go before the city council, that's a wasted effort. If you have a party before the school committee, that's a wasted effort. What you should be doing is marshalling your resources to Beacon Hill and telling your legislative delegation. And again, I give kudos to the state senator because he's been consistent for the last two years of providing an amendment to benefit gateway communities. And we have a colleague from the Haverhill School Committee that he did an analysis of it's about $20 million when you don't account for inflationary measures linked to Chapter 70. That is the biggest problem right now. Because we wouldn't even be talking about whether the federal government's going to be providing grant funding or not is because the state is not stepping up to the plate. And I can go on an individual basis and I invite teacher, parent, administrator, my colleagues. We all know what the situation is. You have an inflationary situation that occurred starting in 2022. Inflation rose up to 9.1%. That is also the timeframe that interest rates skyrocketed. The maximum amount that could be allowed for us is 4.5% in terms to account for inflation. We've been woefully below that. If you look at the Group Insurance Commission, I'm glad the superintendent brought that up, they do a look-back period to account for inflation. Chapter 70, there has not been a look-at-back period. So, we're, I think we're averaging probably now 5.5, if you look at the last few years, in terms of inflation. The State House is not matching that in terms of Chapter 70 allocations. So, we can go back and forth and the taxpayers, which I have an obligation to, and most of the budgets I've supported over the years. I'm not going to support a budget that's overinflated, that we made no effort whatsoever as a community to approach a legislative delegation. And I certainly don't want to give a free pass to the governor, who has really screwed up with the utilities. All she offers is tax increases, the illegal alien situation, I don't even want to go down to that road again. And she has a rainy day fund that's approaching $10 billion. We did a millionaire's tax that, by the way, 48% of residents of Massachusetts voted against, so that barely passed. So, millionaire's tax, rainy day fund, sports betting, casinos, and pot dispensaries. And we're having a conversation about a budget at the local level with all the resources that Beacon Hill. But we're going to go through the same process again, and we're going to have all these rallies, and I'll have the same conversation with people. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
So, looking at the numbers, when we look at net school spending, it's increased by about $5 million. And when I'm looking at the budget that we've, where we desire, we're looking at about $20 million increase. And then, if we have the zero FTEs, we're looking at about $11 million more than net school spending. So, while I can appreciate wanting to go to the city council and saying, here's our budget, the reality of it is, is they're not going to give us $20 million above net school spending. And that's reality. And I wouldn't put that on the taxpayers of Methuen. So, we need to do our job and make some difficult decisions. And just heading to the city council saying, here you go, say no, well, everybody, everybody knows they're going to say no. And so, we need to do the work because they're not going to be saying no until June. And we need to get a budget.
Right.
So, we need to do our jobs. This is what we're paid to do, this is what we're elected to do. And I think it's very irresponsible to say that we're going to go to the city council with $20 million increase.
We have to be really sensitive of time, so we've got to kind of rein it in. We wrap up?
I, I will. So, I've already stated some of the things for next steps. Continue meeting with the mayor and the CAFO to determine that city contribution number. I will certainly, Mr. Member Willett, I am communicating with legislators regarding the status of our funding. And then, just looking for feedback and discussions with the school committee and leadership team as we schedule more of these meetings to talk about the budget. I do think I'm, I'm also realistic, but also want, want the best for our students, as do all of you do as well. I think the one thing that is the most stressful thing for myself and the staff sitting behind me is the timing. That's one of the things that makes this process really a struggle for us is that our process has to happen and kind of be done before the state is done. And so, we've always created our budget based off of the governor's number. We haven't really strayed too far from that in the end of any budget cycle since I've been superintendent. It's been pretty close to the governor's budget, you know, maybe plus or minus a couple hundred thousand, not enough to offset this. So, I just want to be mindful of that. Again, we're starting this early because of, I think, what we potentially could be up against or not. But I think that it would be unfair to say that, you know, we don't have work to do in the coming weeks. But I would also say that I certainly appreciate and the, the thoughtfulness and the reflectiveness of the school committee in that there is potentially a narrative. And I hope, and I appreciate membership ability saying that this was different tonight because it was a ton of work. But I think that the amount of narrative and education is what we need because that's what the community needs. We talk about it, and I think we all still need to be educated on different parts of this as we talk about it and what that impact is on our kids, on the programming and our staff. And so, again, I hope this is something you can kind of carry out into the public. I will edit the, the, the presentation to make sure it is correct and posted. I'll repost it corrected on any errors that might be on it. But I think it is going to be a lengthy process regardless of where we are at this point. So, we do have two more agenda items. Three, really, because we have an executive session. But if we go, you know, if we don't make the executive session, we will have to carry it forward, and that's what we'll do.
So, at this point, we need to select additional school committee meeting dates for budget workshops? Superintendent, not sure if you have anything particular in mind?
I don't, I, I think that we need, I, I would highly recommend at least one between now and April 14th, if not two. I worry that April 14th and then the week after is April vacation, and then we're at another workshop. And then, we really only have like a three-week period between that and the, so I would, I would, while we're still discussing and figuring out numbers with the city, I would say one or two meetings. And I don't know if it has been announced, but the remote and hybrid option has been extended till 2027. So, that is still an option for us to move forward in a remote or hybrid option, which might help in this situation if we have to pull together a session just to talk about the, the budget.
I'm thinking for the sake of time, we could probably sometime tomorrow or something like that, try to hash out some dates.
Put a couple of dates out there and send it to everybody?
That's fine.
Perfect.
We also have a executive session on the 31st. We could potentially just schedule a meeting after that.
Hmm, hmm, certainly, yeah.
If that works for everybody, we can just put that on the books now and just do a workshop at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yep, let's start with that.
The 31st. So, we'll post, we can post both of those at the same time, executive session, and then we'll come in at 6. Okay.
Great. So, next on the agenda, we have Member Donovan, discussion about the MASC training?
Yeah, and thank you for tasking me with this responsibility. We talked, I think, last week, started off with Member DiZoglio, having additional training. We agreed as a team, if I remember correctly, last week, last time we met informally, that we would have MS, MASC come in and talk to us about norms, establishing perhaps a mission statement, how we would deal with communications. There is a graphic organizer, there's a whole packet that MASC can share, but it's online. A contact there says she would need about an hour and a half to two hours. I know we have a lot on our plate right now, but it's something that is a policy and we must adhere to. And I think we're running out of room. And I think we're running out of room time, so I'm just wondering what we should be doing? Or was suggested maybe before or in place of our April workshop? I don't think we can do that now, I know. We're kind of like, eh. What's the pleasure of the?
Make it happen.
Just make it happen? How about if I ask MAS-C to send us, and they're in the middle of superintendent searches that they assist with, so why don't I ask for some dates from them? My question is, would you want to do it before a meeting, like have a 4:30, 4:30 start date before?
We could do that, maybe have to throw some.
I will throw, I will follow your lead and send out, okay, great. So look for some emails.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Any other business from the committee? All right, at this point, it is roughly 9:45, I believe, so we're getting close. Do we think we'll have enough time? All right. So with no further business to discuss, we need a motion in a second to adjourn tonight's open session of the school committee and enter into executive session.
So.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second, is from Member DiZoglio pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. I'll make that declaration now. This is regarding Unit B. We will not reconvene into open session at the conclusion of the executive session. We'll take a roll call vote now on entering executive session.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borga?
Yes. All right, we're going into executive session. The time is roughly 9:46 PM. Open session is adjourned.
Good night, Methuen.